I know.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to encourage you to please take your seat. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, please. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to your city commission meeting. It is four o'clock on September 25th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone is present. To start off with the invocation, I would like to ask Father Wes Jago of St. Peter's Ancelean Cathedral, please join us for the invocation. And while you are getting settled, I would like to invite the Hartsfield Elementary Chorus that will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation to please come line up and set up down front right now. Father Jago, when you are ready, let us pray.
Oh Lord, our governor, whose glory fills all the world, we commend this city, this state, and this nation to your merciful care, that we may be guided by your providence and dwell secure in your peace. Grant to the president of this nation, the governor of this state, and the mayor and commission of this great city of Tallahassee, and to all in authority, wisdom, and strength to know and to do your will. Fill them with a love of truth and righteousness, and make them continually mindful of their calling to serve this people in reverent obedience to you through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, world without end. Amen.
Amen.
Boys and girls, when you are ready to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is to your right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty then. Thank you. Father Jago, thank you very much for the invocation. Certainly do appreciate it. At this time, I would like, go ahead and take your seats, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to recognize Diane Williams Cox, Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, for some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Citizens of Tallahassee, we are blessed with abundance of talent and gifts. Today, you're going to just get a snippet of one school who is really making a difference in our community. These young people are members of the Hartsfield Elementary School Choral Group. They have been invited to Carnegie Hall not once, but twice. The last time they were invited, they couldn't get there because Hurricane Michael happened. Well, we're going to do it again since we got invited again, and you can help make that happen. They have to raise $65,000. Anyone can pull out their checkbook right now and just do that. But we are, we're going to do this as a community because when they show up at Carnegie Hall, we all show up. They're going to represent the Tallahassee, proud Tallahassee and strong Tallahassee. So today, I wanted you to see the faces of the young people that you will be making your tax deductible contributions to. Feel free to go to the Leon County Schools Foundation website, and you will see the Live 65 on that website, and you can make your contributions. As they leave the front, they're going to do a snippet of their school song. You may, um, this song may sound familiar to you, but you may not know the words. But I, so I want you to listen very carefully to the words. "Hartsfield, are we ready?"
Yes.
Let me recognize their principal, Dr. Flanagan. And their floor director, Ms. Jackson. And parents, if you're in the room, why don't you stand up, parents? We also have our sister superintendent on the front row, please stand. And we have our school board member over in the corner videotaping. I'm going to move out of the way so that they can show you just a little bit of what they can do. And when you're done, you all can, go ahead, we don't want y'all to stay around for this, this long boring meeting. You've got to go do homework. Once you're done, you can proceed to leave. Thank you all.
Please remain standing for the Hawks Creed. I am somebody.
Go to the mic, you come to the mic.
I am somebody.
I am somebody.
I'll be a better somebody today.
I'll be a better somebody today.
I will reach my goals.
I will reach my goals.
Art and soul.
Art and soul.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to take our hearts to the Hartsfield Zone. We're going to soar till we can't no more. We're going to take our hearts to the Hartsfield Zone. We're going to soar till we can't no more. We've got the teachers in our class, pride in our hearts, connected as a family. Yeah, that made us smart. On the rise, you see, making history. Yeah, we had our seat, earned it 'cause we learned it. Can't nobody tell me nothing.
All right.
Can't nobody tell me nothing. Our still is pressing.
Wonderful job.
Good job.
Wonderful job.
Boys and girls, we are so extremely proud of you, and we are proud of you representing the city of Tallahassee and Leon County and the school board up in New York City. Do a wonderful job and have a great time. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. That's a great way to start the meeting.
Isn't it?
We have a couple deletions from your agenda. Items 9.03 and 9.05 have been removed from your material. We have an addition of item 15.06. The attachment on item 1502 has been updated, and items 9.02 and 9.04 have been pulled from your consent agenda and renumbered respectively, 10.01 and 10.02 for discussion.
Excellent. Any questions, colleagues? Wonderful. Anything else under agenda modifications, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
That's great. So I would like to ask Mr. Calvin Martinbro and Jessica Rogers to please come join me at the podium for a special presentation. Calvin, anybody else you'd like to invite to join us would be great. Ladies and gentlemen, Bill Proctor's in the house. Commissioners, good to see you. Your Honor, good to see you. Got all types of dignitaries that are here. I also want to take a second, hey Neil, how are you? And recognize Mrs. Ford, the former First Lady of the city of Tallahassee. It is an honor and a privilege. Ladies and gentlemen, for the past 20 years, the city of Tallahassee has enjoyed a sister city relationship with St. Martin, and I am here to present a proclamation reestablishing that relationship between the city of Tallahassee. Here we go. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas this year, 2019, is the 20th anniversary of the establishment of the sister city agreement between the island nation of St. Martin and the city of Tallahassee on September 23rd, 1999. And whereas we recognize the successes, achievements, and the reciprocal relationships forged as a result of this agreement, and the most notable being the educational program whereby college-bound scholarship recipients from St. Martin have the opportunity to attend institutions of higher learning in Tallahassee, whereby countless students have successfully matriculated and become productive citizens. And whereas we thank the original signatories, government entities, and organizations for their contributions and assistance, from St. Martin, the Honorable Commissioner of Tourism, Commissioner of Education, Executive Council of St. Martin, Division of Study Finance, Promotional Committee Foundation, and the Sister City Committee Foundation, from Tallahassee, the mayor's office, the city manager's office, the Economic Development Department, the International Affairs Council, and Caribbean Carnival International Incorporated. And whereas the most recent evidence of the strength of this relationship was the response of the citizens of Tallahassee to Hurricane Irma and Maria relief efforts to the citizens of St. Martin, we acknowledge the dedication and commitment of those two cities and its citizens to maintain the spirit of the sister city relationship, which is now a long-lasting friendship. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the end with my colleagues on the city commission, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the 20th anniversary of the Tallahassee-St. Martin sister city relationship, and I ask our citizens to join in the celebration and participate in activities related to the 20th anniversary to the Tallahassee-St. Martin sister city relationship, signed by me today, September 25th, in witness of all of you. I'd like to present you with this proclamation.
Honorable Mayor of Tallahassee, City Council, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address you at this very important milestone of a partnership between two countries so far apart in miles, but with so much in common as a people. I bring you greetings from the people and government of St. Martin, and particularly the Minister of Education, Culture, Youth, and Sport, the Honorable Wyclef Smith, asked me to express his deep regrets for not being able to be here in person due to unforeseen circumstances beyond his control. But rest assured that his commitment to this sister city partnership agreement is one that is embedded into his heart. I was not here at the initial signing of the agreement in 1999, but I can recall the enthusiasm, cooperation, and assistance by all involved when I brought my first group of students to this lovely city in the year 2001. Twenty years have gone by pretty fast, but we can all look back and beat our chest with satisfaction for how well these two decades have turned out. The relationship between Tallahassee and St. Martin has been a remarkable one in many aspects. And now, on this 20th anniversary, we can all proudly celebrate our achievements that allowed close to 200 young St. Martiners to attend your prestigious educational institutions, the lively Technical College, Tallahassee Community College, Florida A&amp;M University, and Florida State University. I am happy to report that many of those students who came here a generation ago are now back on St. Martin as qualified professionals, contributing to the development of their beloved island. In fact, 20 years, the city of Tallahassee has helped train dozens of young St. Martin professionals who occupy very responsible positions in their community. In this regard, Tallahassee has been a very reliable and generous partner in the development of our island. It is also important to note that in the world we live in today, a relationship that lasts 20 years is not very common. Not even marriages last that long anymore.
Uh-oh. Look at that.
A long blow.
We applaud the dedication, commitment, consistency of the city of Tallahassee in making this relationship work so well. Currently, there are 71 St. Martin students enrolled in various institutions of higher learning in this city. They are very satisfied with their schools and with the hospitality that the city offers them. We are indeed very grateful for this. In closing, let me thank a few persons that have been very instrumental from the beginning of this project and made great sacrifices to ensure its viability and sustainability. Former city manager, Anita Favors Thompson. Michael Parker, spot him here today. Ben Harris. Maria Henry. The Lynx Moms Away From Home. Stephen Knight. Bill Proctor, right next to me. Arthur Ligees, who everyone knows here, he's back at home now. Thank you all so much for looking, thank you all so much, and I look forward to another 20 years of an even closer and mutually beneficial relationship. I, as senior study financing policy advisor and government's representative on the Tallahassee-St. Martin World Group, find it more than fitting to present you today with this plaque of gratitude from the Division Study Financing on behalf of the students, the parents, and the government of St. Martin. And to present it will be my newly appointed study financing officer, who will be responsible for the students in the United States and Canada, Ms. Jessica Rogers, started with me the 1st of August.
Amen. Let's try to get together and get a picture. What do we say? Come on, everybody, listen. Colleagues and colleagues, best to stand right there and, uh, or you can come join down here, whatever you want to do, whatever works.
We'll be seeing, standing here.
Thank you all so much. Mr. City Manager, do we have any announcements?
No, sir, there are no announcements.
Okay, now we're at the point in the meeting where we allow citizen input on agenda items. If you do not think that you will be here when we cover a specific item, I encourage you to speak right now. As we say at all meetings, let's try to set the example for all of our students and our colleagues and our citizens all across the city of Tallahassee that are here. Let's treat each other with respect, but everybody will obviously have an opportunity to speak. So as you approach the dais, if you'll please state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to address the body. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor, we do have speakers. The, the first is Max McCann, speaking on item 1304, which is e-scooters.
Okay. Mr. McCann, would you like to speak now or wait until the item?
I'd like to speak now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Your name and address, please, in three minutes.
Yes, Your Honor. Max McCann, 915 East Jefferson Street, Tallahassee, Florida. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, other citizens, and esteemed attendees. I just want to say a few words about the e-scooter program, and specifically in support of the program. The first thing that I want to do is urge this commission to approach the question correctly, which in my opinion is not to consider scooters in isolation. It might be tempting to say, oh, we should either have scooters or we should not have scooters, or we've had these problems with scooters, so we should get rid of them. What we have to do, again, in my opinion, is to consider scooters for what they are, which is an alternative to the reliance that we've had on car culture in the past. Scooters represent a way for us to break free of what is frankly the carnage that cars have caused on our society. And the difficult approach here is that, well, cars are the status quo, so it's difficult for us to recognize the harm that they cause because we've all accepted them into our life, and we've sort of accepted the externalities of cars as just a cost of doing business. But really, if you, if you take a step back and consider it, the reliance that we have on cars is frankly absurd. They're expensive, they're dangerous, they're bad for the planet, they're bad for communities, and they're bad for our health. So I would urge you to consider scooters as, not a perfect means, of course, but a way for us to take a step forward in getting people out of their cars, engaging with the communities around them, leading a more active lifestyle, and a way that we can break the stranglehold that car culture has on our society. Please continue the pilot program for the e-scooters. Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Appreciate it.
Great.
Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Lenoris Barber, and...
Mr. Barber, good to see you, sir.
Mayor, I believe all the rest of our speakers want to speak at the time of the item.
Excellent. Your name and address, please? Three minutes, Mr. ...
Lenoris Barber, 802 Old Bambidge Road. I have one purpose for being here tonight, and that's to say thank you. Thank you to the city of Tallahassee for your support of French Town Rising Events. Especially want to thank Ashley Edwards and Ally from her crew, and Chief Outlaw and Calvin, I can't pronounce his last name, but, um, they have been phenomenal in their support of us. We couldn't have done it without them. They were almost like free consultants because we didn't know what we was doing. We only, we only knew what we wanted to do, and they guided us, and we really, really appreciate it. And if I had one word to describe them, it would be competent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Each of the other speakers has indicated they want to speak at the time the item comes forward, and I'm looking around and don't see anyone else coming forward.
Excellent. We are now on appearances by other governmental entities before this board. Mr. Manager, do we have any?
No appearances.
We are on the consent agenda.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Consent agenda has been moved and properly seconded, moved by the mayor pro temp, properly seconded by Commissioner Bryant. So you know for the comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. City Manager?
The next item, sir, is item 10.01. I'll provide a brief overview. This item was pulled from your consent agenda. It involves the contractual services for tree trimming around the city's overhead electric distribution and transmission systems. I think there were, as a concern expressed, that it was revising the policy and the standards used for tree trimming. I'll share a little background for the benefit of the commission. Rob McGear is here to help me. The policy that's in place today was revised in 2017. That followed a pilot process that was put in place in 2014, where we tested the trimming, the extended trimming distances from four to six feet to eight to 12 feet. We did it very carefully. We did it in two particular areas, in and around our Orange Avenue area as well as in Klarne. That was because of excessive outages that we were experiencing. The pilot went very well. It crossed over the period after Hurricane Hermine, and the city commission approved those standards. So that was, that's kind of the backdrop on where we find ourselves today. If it's helpful, I think we have a couple pictures that might illustrate the new standard.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, as Reese said, as the manager said, we've got some pictures here from back when we were doing the pilot that gives you a feel for pre and post. So picture on the left was before we went in, did the trimming on the right, where we trimmed out to eight to 12 feet. And then here's a few other, another before and after set of pictures. I believe this one, these are up in the Klarne area, in the Bridle Trail area in Klarne. To give you a feel for what it looks like afterwards with the enhanced trimming. And then, uh, this is on, in Waverly, I think, where we've done some of the before and after enhanced trimming. Add a couple things that the manager said. Part of the discussion in, uh, 2017 to look at changing the standard and going to the enhanced after the pilots was the, over half of our outages are tree or tree-related. Trees, tree limbs, or animals that get from the trees onto the wires. And so we see this as an opportunity to help enhance the reliability, and we've been doing it for a couple years now. We started in October of 17 with the system-wide. It's not gone as quick as we wanted, but it's been moving well. We coordinate with the neighborhoods when we go into the neighborhoods, and both for the regular trimming and the enhanced trimming. And to my knowledge, there hadn't been any complaints about the enhance. There's been the typical tree trimming opportunities we have anytime we're in there, and in fact, the majority of the comments we've gotten when we've been in doing the enhanced work is, don't do it in a phased approach. Go ahead and get it trimmed out as far as we can faster. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
Wonderful. Mr. Manager, colleagues, I was the one that pulled that item. I believe we all received an email from a citizen that'd like to comment on this item. I think it's great standard procedure that anytime the public wants to comment, we should give them the opportunity. So do we have, uh, Mr. Manager, first, any closing comments?
No, sir. I think that Rob did a good job.
Great. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. Ramona Abernathy-Payne and Randy Dinkler.
Great.
I think those are the only two that I have on this particular item.
Great to see you. Thanks for coming out. Your name and address for the record, please.
Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, 32301. Thank you for giving me the chance to address you today. I ask that the consent agenda item be pulled for discussion because it touches on many issues that concern our community. I felt it was too important, I felt it was too important to pass this contract change through on a consent vote. I do agree with staff's recommendation to change from Asplund to Wolf for trimming services. Issues of concern are several. Conducting business without a finalized contract is not the way I do business, and yet that's in this, or in this measure. Utility service, the effect of tree sit, tree trimming, and the recoverability in storms, I understand that's an important item, but we need to consider how those costs figure into the balance between continuing overhead transmission and going underground. Further, the impact on our urban forest. Changing the cutback area from four to six feet to eight to 12 feet, which is not commonly known in the community, will radically change the way our canopy looks. I'm not a native to Tallahassee, but I chose Tallahassee as my home. I have lived here 46 years and have listened, listened to the concerns of citizens in all parts of town. I'm not an expert in any of these areas and have not deeply researched any of them, but I hear what people are saying, and I know that passing this measure through without public discussion will upset many in our community. Thank you for listening for my, thank you for listening to me, and thank you for pulling the measure.
Of course. Thank you.
Next speaker is Randy Dinkler.
Mr. Dinkler, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Randy Dinkler, 552 East Georgia Street. And as the mayor has said, I have been gone for a while, but I'm back, and it's good to see all of you and to have a chance to share my concerns with you. I'm concerned about this because, well, three reasons. The first is that it is going to be, well, bad for the trees. But ironically, it's actually going to be worse for public safety. I've been talking to a lot of tree experts, and they say that actually, this kind of severe pruning will actually make the trees more dangerous because such cutting actually weakens the overall health of the tree, and so over time, it will actually be more dangerous. And finally, I'm concerned about the public purse. It's going to cost a lot of money to keep trimming these trees, and I feel this is money that could be better that could be better spent beginning the process of retrofitting the burial of electric lines. And I don't know if the commission is aware of the fact, but on this past September 20th, the Public Service Commission issued a 39-page report that details new proposed rules for burying electrical lines as a way to make Florida more secure from hurricanes, and especially now when hurricanes are getting more severe and more frequent. This is, of course, a question of state concern, not just Tallahassee. And the PSC will be voting on these new rules this coming October 3rd. Therefore, I feel it's premature to be spending money for pruning when the law may be about to change to require burial. So as we all know, burial costs more, but over time, it actually saves money and it makes service more reliable. And at the current time, we already have a lot of buried utilities such as internet, cable TV, sewage, water, and the like, so we can utilize some of these existing easements and start retrofitting our electric lines. And from my point of view, this ultimately will be a better investment for the city than aggressive tree pruning, which is a very stop-gap measure. So that's where, as a taxpayer, I would like to see the city spending its money, and thank you very much for your time and attention, and it's nice to be back.
Great. Good to see you.
Thank you, Randy.
Mr. Clerk?
No other speakers on this item.
Great. Colleagues, we'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I certainly want to thank both of the young ladies who have come forward to speak. Your input is very well taken, but I can tell you, I lived in one of those areas where when the wind would blow, our utilities went out. At my church, we would be in the middle of church service, and a squirrel would get caught on one of the lines, and we had no lights in church, and it was happening so frequently. And we determined that it was because of the limbs over the power lines, and as Rob mentioned, the squirrels having access to those lines, the limbs falling on the lines during what was not even a severe weather event. But I can tell you, since we were one of the pilot sites, and I say we, it included my neighborhood, the Jake Gaither neighborhood, and all of the neighborhoods that are on that circuit. Since we've had the pruning pilot, my neighbors and I welcomed it. It was done in a way that did not destroy the aesthetics of our neighborhood, and even some of my trees had to be trimmed back because they had grown up around the power lines, and it was done in a way that did not take away from the aesthetics of the neighborhood, but it certainly improved our quality of life because we haven't seen the frequency of outages in our area that we saw prior to this effort. And so I understand what you're saying, and I take it to heart, but as a citizen that personally experienced this, I can tell you, it has worked not only for our area, but the other areas where we have done this. And so that's why this evening I would be in support of us moving forward with this contract. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you. I would just request, Mr. City Manager, if you can give us a list of the areas that have had the eight to 12 feet as illustrated in the photos, just so, not right now, just in the future, as we move forward. And then, secondly, just on the contract amount, it says, I guess, in six months, we'll have more of an idea of what their actual cost and what they're charging us per mile in six months. I'd like to get an update at that point. And Madam City Attorney, if this becomes more expensive than kind of what we're projecting here, there's still a termination of convenience if we decide it's getting out of hand, right?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, let me say that I'm 100% in favor of underground utilities. So you can probably tell I don't have any where I live. However, I think we're in the stop-gap mode, and until we can get to where everyone, we can actually pay for everyone to have underground utilities, this cutback procedure will, in essence, do exactly what Curtis has described, and we certainly need to look at the funding, the cost associated with it, and somewhat of a pilot mode that we're in right now. So, thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Williams Cox, you good? I need a motion, folks.
Move staff recommendations, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion on the table for staff recommendation from the mayor pro temp, properly seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Let me also go on the record saying, Commissioner Bryant, I am wholeheartedly in favor of burying power lines. Absolutely. That is also, I believe, a multi-billion dollar process. And so, you know, the question is, how do we move forward? Obviously, we won't do it all in one year, but how do we move forward? How do we put that plan together, and how do we make that happen? And I think that we're committed to that conversation and putting that plan together and seeing what we can do. I have made my position very clear to the city manager that I would love to be able to bury the power lines as well, so. Motion on the table. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. City Manager, we are on the next item.
10.02, sir. This item involves the property management services for the city, and it was pulled for discussion. Staff recommends that you authorize us to negotiate a three-year property management contract with three one-year extensions if we elect with the highest-ranked bidder, which is Talcor. If those negotiations fail, we would then move to TLG, which is the second-ranked bidder. The services would be for our Renaissance Center Building, our Gemini Building, and we're seeking your authorization to execute those documents and related transactions. The reason it was pulled was there were some concerns raised about the procurement process. If you would like, I've got our experts. If you wish to take the speakers, that might be productive to hear any concerns, and we can certainly address those.
Sounds great. Before we take speakers, Madam Attorney, let me go ahead and state on the record, because this was a quasi-judicial proceeding, I was contacted by Mr. Wilkinson, who I immediately told him we were in the cone of silence, that I could not discuss this issue with him. I encouraged him and his company that if they were unhappy with the process, we follow the process, file a bid protest, and of course, encourage them to come and speak at the city commission meeting as well. So, law states that we need to put that on the record, and so by doing so, audibly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, I'd also like to state, I have a business with a tenant relationship with Talcor, so just as, to avoid an appearance of conflict, I'm going to recuse myself in this.
Excellent. Sounds good. And remove yourself. Go have a cup of coffee. Excellent. Any other comments before we begin? Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do have several speakers on this item, Mayor. The first is Bill Powell, and followed by Ben Wilkinson.
Great. Kyle, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. You have sent me two emails in the past couple of days. I want you to know I am not ignoring you. I was in receipt of your email, but because of the quasi-judicial nature and the cone of silence, I did not respond to your email.
I fully understand.
Yes, sir.
For the record, my name is Bill Powell. I'm a partner and director of property management for TLG Management Services. Pardon my voice, I'm not used to having September allergy issues and 97-degree temperature. So I'll try to speak as clearly as I can.
Yes, sir.
So, as I start my opening comments, if I could ask Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor pro temp and the commissioners to open the document that's there and scroll to the bottom and open up the scoring sheet. I'd like, I'm going to address that for just a moment, but first off, I wanted to talk a little bit about TLG Management's relationship with the city. It began back, from the property management standpoint, back in 2009 with these two exact buildings, Gemini and Renaissance. Since then, we have rebranded, changed our company's name, so the Tallahassee Land Group evolved into TLG. We have a real estate company and a property management company housed in the same building. We have enjoyed the relationship with Gemini and Renaissance. The past six years, it's been the exact same property manager involved in those properties. She's a 17-year experienced manager. We've had a couple different maintenance techs in there, the one there that now, I would say that both of them could walk in those buildings and people know them by first name. So we know the employees, staff members in there that don't like too many lights above their workstations because of their computer. We know what temperatures certain areas need to be. So we attend to their needs very closely. So I like to think that that's a good working relationship that the city would enjoy. Under the current bid recommendation, if you would take a moment and look at the scoring sheet, you'll see that the total score at the bottom for each, it's almost nil. It's .6 points out of 100 difference. The one thing that is most glaring on this scoring sheet, if you look at the MBE participation, you'll see both companies scored a flat zero. Now, there's either two problems there, one of two problems. One, you've got the wrong companies here, which I don't think is the case, or number two, there was a problem in the RFP as it was written, because if one company didn't score anything and the other one did, maybe that was a misinterpretation on our part. But both companies didn't. There was a problem there.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay. The bottom line is that we have an MBA participation form that we use with our vendors, and we have submitted that. It was part of the package that went in. I understand from the last city-county property management meeting that the city and county are working together to come up with a consistent one-use property or MBE form, and I'm welcome to be a part of that committee if allowed. So, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ben Wilkinson, and then Lori Campbell.
Wilkinson, name and address for the record, please, and I apologize if I was short with you on the phone the other day.
Cone of silence is my new favorite term. Frustrating. Ben Wilkinson, 3520 Thomasville Road. I'm going to scrap my notes and kind of finish the point that Bill was making regarding the MBE. It was acknowledged by staff that the language was confusing and not clear, and this was part of our period where we could contest the bid. We were all in agreement, but our direction was to reach out to the person in procurement who had drafted the language and have that conversation. We attempted several times with no answer until finally, the following Monday at 4:45, we got a response. Well, the response was, you may or may not be right, but you only got 15 minutes left in your challenge period. And this was after an acknowledgement that it was confusing language, that we would, in all likelihood, have been awarded the points. To get that call 15 minutes before the deadline is incomprehensible. There's several other items or instances that were, changes made at 11th hour after we were told, including at the bid opening, that they had high accolades for both companies, and the competitor is a good friend. We compete every day, and that's fine. You win some, you lose some, and as long as you're on a level playing field, that's fine. We weren't. And I don't know where the stop-gap was, or where the confusion, or where the misdirection occurred. I have some suspicions we won't go into here, but the fact that we weren't allowed to challenge and at least give an explanation and change is, it's just beyond explanation. After that, we were in this cone of silence, and I was told repeated times, we've acknowledged there's an issue, we'll get with you, don't worry. Well, I didn't start worrying until after the agenda is put up again and going in the same direction, which after the bid opening, they were going to split the properties, and both of y'all are great guys, you're .6% apart. This seems like a win-win. And at that point, I said, that's fair enough, until we saw the agenda, which was completely different from staff direction. So there's a lot of these items. I know our time is limited. What I'm asking is to pull this back, and let's go back and revisit, at least give us the opportunity that we were not granted during the challenge period to say, hey, there's a lot of discrepancies here, there was confusion, allow us to resubmit on that. Things might change. We're going through a bid process per the city's regulations, instructions, whatever it is, yet the recently acquired property, Northwood, was never put through the bid process because you had a relationship with an onsite manager. That's all well and good. You have a relationship with us as well. We're not only, we're not afforded the same courtesy, but we're putting through a process that we're just getting the rope pulled out from us left and right. And nobody in that room, in fact, all of them, to the man and woman, had highest praise for our company. They had highest praise for the other company as well. So I'm asking this thing to be pulled and reconsidered, and let's eliminate the cone of silence and shed some light on this. That's it. End of my time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lori Campbell, and then Ed Murray.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, thank you for having us.
Your name and address, please.
Lori Campbell, 1018 Thomasville Road. With respect to the process, TLG was, in fact, afforded an opportunity to protest. They actually filed the intent to protest a few days late, in what I was told, in recognition of the time exchange of trying to get back and forth with staff, so they went ahead and accepted it. But they never formalized the protest. The seven days came and went, and they never formalized the protest. Regarding the MBE form itself, the question where TLG had listed a couple firms, it says, indicate whether the respondent had utilized MBE subcontractors. And I emphasize the word subcontractors because a subcontractor is an individual or a business that contracts to perform part or all of another party's contract. So in other words, is there a part of the TLG contract where they are subcontracting part of their property management services to another? Similar to TLG, we also use MBE firms when provided the needed services for our management-managed properties. And to name just a few, we use CNL Associates, Crickets Tree Service, Link Floors, Clearview Coatings, Tallahassee Welding. These are just a few of the MBE certified firms that we solicit proposals from on a regular basis, and we would continue to do so if we're awarded this contract with you. So we would ask that you stay with staff's recommendation at this time.
Thank you.
Next is Ed Murray.
Mr. Murray, thanks for joining us. Your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Ed Murray, 1018 Thomasville Road. I'm the principal of NAI Talcor. Since Ben spoke, I guess I'd speak. We're also a quality management company. We manage four and a half million square feet. We manage for different governmental entities. We use MBE services, but we accurately filled out the form. We were accurately the high bidder. We went back the second time we filled out the form, we were still the high bidder. It's kind of confusing. If you don't award the high bidder when they're the high bidder, what do you have a process for? We want to manage for you guys, we look forward to moving on, and I hope we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
No other speakers on this item, Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I think it might be productive if I could invite Darrell Jones, our MBE director, to come forward. I think there's some question, he can shed some light on that. When this issue came up, I will tell you, I inspected the process to make sure it was sound. I could not find any reason to throw the proposals out. We are obligated to a process, which in this case was an RFP, and that happened. And I know Mr. Jones also re-inspected the MBE allocation. I'd like him to speak to that for just a minute.
Yes, commissioners, city manager, the process for this RFP, we did review it more than once. As documented in the bid documents and is also is found in city policy, we award points for both MWSBE utilization, which means you cite firms that you'll use on this project, and then there's a MWSBE utilization form that also provides points. Neither were submitted by either respondent, so that is why points were not awarded. Although there was good faith, an attempt at good faith that was documented by TLG, we offer no points for attempts at good faith or proper good faith, and that's why there were no points awarded for either respondent.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask our procurement director, Andre LeBrotz. This covers different areas, and that's very common in this approach, where we have the MBE, the local participation, that's scored by one group that's fit into the proposal. The gentleman indicated correspondence post, posting of scores, and I know Mr. LeBrotz can address that. He was the one primarily in communication, and he can describe the process regarding the protest period, and then what you do to formalize that. Andre, will you please shed some light on this?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, commissioners and city manager. You know, to start off, we have great working relationships with hundreds of quality vendors, and there does come a time where we have to resolicit these services, no matter how happy we are. It's a process that is required. We have hundreds of proposals each year that we receive with MBE that are scored and evaluated. With respect to the posting process, I'm just gonna start off quickly with an overview of the process in total and take us through the timeline as quickly as I can. We started with RFP development and review at the same time that we're putting the solicitation together. Our sponsoring department or the RFP chair is tasked with putting together an evaluation committee that's approved by the city manager. As you can see, the evaluation committee is listed on the slide. Our RFP was released on May 6th. We had a pre-bid meeting on May 14th. This pre-bid meeting was optional. Some pre-bid meetings are mandatory, and if you don't show, unfortunately, you cannot bid. Some RFPs have no pre-bid meeting. This one was optional, so you could decide if you wanted to come. The questions and answers for this particular solicitation were due on May 15th and were answered by the city on May 20th. With respect to the questions received, there were no questions with respect to MBE, how the forms should be filled out, the process in general, not a single question. And as I stated, we have hundreds of solicitations a year that have MBE that's evaluated and scored. The proposals were due on the 24th of May. I don't know what I'm saying. Okay. Once the proposals are past the due date, our purchasing agent reviews, opens the proposals and reviews them for responsiveness. In this particular solicitation, we had two responses, both, two proposers, and both were responsive. The exercise of responsiveness is required forms and other, you know, components of the solicitation itself. The proposals were distributed to the evaluation committee members. And an important part to note here is our evaluators go through a training process, and we look for independent scoring of all the proposals. The evaluators come together at the first scoring meeting on June 1st, June 12th, I'm sorry. And through that scoring meeting, which is a public meeting and properly noticed, the evaluators have an opportunity to discuss their, you know, the proposals, what they felt was strong, the approach, the methodology, and all of the categories that are part of the process. Out of that, scoring meeting resulted in a score sheet that is reviewed and approved by the RFP chair. That score sheet was posted. That was the start of a seventy-two-hour posting process that gives vendors the opportunity to protest. Protest is a feeling of being aggrieved that you didn't get proper scoring. No vendor had any questions and submitted no protest to the first posting of the scores. On June 24th, based upon a internal need to revise the cost scoring to support a better three-year cost estimate of what we would be spending to include the monthly fee, the hourly rates, as compared to our three-year past historical usage, a posting of the score sheet as it related to cost was reposted. That started a new seventy-two-hour period. There was no change in ranking of the recommended firms.
Andre, will you share what the change was?
The change?
Yes.
Was like about a half a point, just on the cost component.
Who received the point? Half a point?
TLG received a half a point or so in additional cost points. So it brought them closer together. During this particular second posting period, some questions were escalated to procurement. Communication during the cone of silence needs to start with the agent. Question came with respect to MBE. We forwarded that over to MBE while the seventy-two-hour clock is still moving. We were getting near the seventy-two-hour clock. Questions were escalated to me, so I put in phone calls and emails both to MBE and to our vendor to make sure that I understood the questions. I took those questions to MBE, worked with MBE. When I was sure that I understood the question, I brought answers back to the vendor. Because we were getting short on that seventy-two-hour period, I extended the intent protest period so that they would have another day or two to get in their intent to protest letter. That letter was gonna be due on July 1st, close of business. That phone call and a letter was, an email was sent extending the intent, and it was accepted by both parties that the intent period would be extended to July 1st. The city's protest process, which is part of the procurement process, is a normal part. It can happen, is three steps. A letter of intent needs to be received within seventy-two hours, and that does not include weekends. That part of the process was complete. The next step is the formal receipt of a formal protest letter accompanied by a bond. That bond is one percent of the budget.
Andre.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for the interruption. When you said that process was complete, can you explain what you mean by that?
We received the intent to protest on July 1st, before the close of business that day. We, what's the right word? We confirmed receipt of the intent to protest, and in that confirmation email, we reiterated the need to follow the process as laid out in the solicitation, that a bond and a formal protest letter would be needed in seven days. That confirmation was replied by TLG with, in the opening sentence, "I understand our need to deliver to the city of Tallahassee a protest bond and a formal letter within the next seven days." Once we received the protest letter, we begin to work with the city attorney's office. We will bring all of the documents associated with the solicitation, the formal protest letter, notify all parties, and begin the process of arranging a protest hearing. During the protest, all procurement activity stops until the formal protest hearing is held, and a decision is rendered by the city attorney's office, and that decision is followed by all parties. All right, so this next, first bullet on my next slide, I've taken you through. You know, we followed up on the questions that were received. We had communications, both verbal and email, going back and forth with the vendor, discussing the process, the MBE answers. And we did receive the intent protest letter on time. This was, this process unfortunately makes no allowance for any alternative options, any reviews, any discussions with procurement, any discussions with the department, any informal or formal evaluations. All procurement activity stops until the letter and the bond is received. We did not receive a formal protest letter or bond received by the July 8th deadline.
Mayor, Commissioners, I would add this. I think it's clear, and I indicated I inspected the process when the concern was brought to my attention. And we're obligated to follow these procurement rules when, in fact, TLG has provided good service to the city for many years, but we must follow some procurement process. In this case, it was an RFP, so I think Andre has walked through the steps of that. The folks that were on the ranking committee, their staff, they did in fact score TAO Corp higher than TLG. And in the absence of some issue that it appears that you should pull this back and redo it, the process would be for us to recommend the highest-ranked vendor. So that's where we stand today.
I'm sorry, one item to add that I feel is relevant. We do have several solicitations where someone intends to protest, and it just doesn't culminate in the receipt of a letter or a protest bond.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. City Manager and Mr. Jones might be the one appropriate to answer this. Do we have any minority or women-owned business, property management firms in our area? Or that are certified with the city and county?
Commissioner, I'm not aware of any. Mr. Jones, he's shaking his head. Not off the top of our head do we know about that.
Okay. So there would not have been an opportunity in that instance for one of them to have gotten MBE participation?
It doesn't seem to be the case.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Williams-Cox. I guess my question is, was gonna be along those same lines, but even if they were not bidding on this, if smaller minority women-owned businesses were not bidding on this, is there no, no one available that could work as a sub with these companies? I understand, I heard Mr. Murray say that they have a large contingency of property that they manage. I know that there are a lot of realtors in town of all race and color and what have you. Do we need to actively pursue getting them certified so that they can participate? So we're not fighting, basically fighting over two companies who submitted so that we would have an expanded list of vendors? And I must also add that I'm a little disappointed that we could not award any MBE participation points, because I'm sure we could, we could find somebody who could do something to earn a living and participate in this economic development with these two companies. And so maybe, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but to fight over the fact that we, we have zero participation for minority businesses is, I hope we're gonna do something about that.
Commissioner Bryant?
I guess, I, we have a process, and we follow the process, as I understand it. I'll wait until the mayor.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I was asking City Manager a question.
No problem. I'm just trying to get concurrence that we have followed the process that we use for every bid process. We've gone through and followed the rules. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I can say that's correct.
And I concur that we definitely need to, for neither company to have MBE participation is pretty alarming to me. But as it relates to what's before us right now, we have a process, we follow the process. That's what we need to do.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
I would ask the city manager, through our MWBE office, even though we may be awarding this contract today, but to see if in fact we can find qualified property managers that are minority and women-owned business owners, so that we don't find ourselves in this situation, maybe in the future.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that?
Mr. Manager?
The requested action of this item is to negotiate a contract. That's very customary. Certainly, you know, I think we've all heard your concerns, and I think it would be appropriate as we attempt to negotiate the contract with any vendor, whatever vendor it might be, to get some allowance for minority subs or other vendors that would work under their contract to provide services with your direction. I certainly would include that in any negotiation we would have.
And if I may, I would appreciate that personally and economically, we would appreciate that. But we also want to make sure that we hold the vendor accountable for making sure that they report back on that participation. Because having been a small business owner myself and have submitted my resume to be a part of packets for folks to win work, the first change order is to win me out. And so what we want to make sure is that people are not put in just to say they have someone and then they disappear. So we want to make sure that if that's a part of the negotiation, we need, we need to report back on the MBE minority women, minority, small and women-owned business participation at what level.
I think I can accomplish that. Yes, ma'am.
So, yes, sir.
Just to formalize it, I would like to move that we direct the city manager in his negotiations with the winner of this bid, that he negotiate in that process some level of MWBE participation.
Second.
There's been a motion that's been made by the Mayor, pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. So here are my thoughts. Daryl, let me, Mr. Jones, a couple of questions real quick. So here's where I'm having a hard time. First of all, the comment was made earlier by Mr. Wilkinson that a call was placed, or I don't know, maybe procurement's the appropriate, that the call was placed and wasn't returned until fifteen minutes before the deadline. How did that go down?
Mr. LeBrotz can answer that.
Sure. On June 28th, when we came to the agreement of the intent protest period being extended, we extended it to July 1st. On July 1st, around four in the afternoon, we received the intent to protest. Our reply was the confirmation that we had received the intent to protest email, and that following the city's procurement protest processes, what we needed to finish and begin to schedule the protest hearing was the formal protest letter and the protest bond equal to one percent, which in this case would be about $1,900. The reply, which was the intent to protest, in its first sentence confirmed their understanding of the process. In the body of that email, they requested, well, I don't know if that's the right term. They suggested an alternative process to meet with the evaluation committee, to talk to the department, to explain why they felt the MBE, as they viewed it, would be achieved. Our process just doesn't account for that.
Define sub for me.
In MBE, when we have a solicitation like this, we look for a partnership, a commitment. And to use property management, let me just use an example of lawn care or landscaping.
That's exactly where I was going.
Okay? I know that I need the parking lot blowed off. I know that I need the grass continually cared for. If I were a property management firm, I would have as my MBE partner Mike, Mike's Lawn Care, and I would say that over the course of the three-year period, I intend to utilize Mike for ten and a half percent of the contract, equal to approximately, in this case, well, ten percent of the $190,000, right? If that's what lawn care ended up being, painting, you know? Whatever the services are that you can find to partner with MBEs. You put them on your MBE form. We contract with the prime. The prime has a commitment to those MBE subs, which we track in our MBE systems over the life of the contract.
So the scores were changed after the bids were open?
Not related to MBE, only for a recalculation of cost to incorporate the historical property management hours that were expended for on-call after-hours, normal hours, maintenance calls, et cetera. Judy could explain that process a little bit better than I, but it was explained to me to get to a more accurate three-year cost to support this city agenda item.
At any point in the process, was the recommendation changed?
No, sir. TLG got closer with the recalculation of the cost, but it did not change the ranking.
Okay, I'm gonna support the motion on the table, because I truly believe that even if we pulled back and went out and had them resubmit, and they went through the process, they're gonna get full points for MWBE. they're gonna get full points for MWBE, now that we've clarified what the subs are. Here's what I'm having a problem with, and quite frankly, this is the second procurement process in three meetings, where the MWBE process has come into question during the, during the calculation. And I think that this is something that we need to take a hard look at. You know, I have a hard time sitting back and accepting the fact that we don't have MWBE-qualified lawn care companies, painting companies, plumbers, carpenters, every sub-industry that we could possibly use in property management. So another question is, when we opened the bids and saw that everybody had listed nothing, and everybody got zero, did any red flags go up that maybe there was confusion, and that there needs to be clarification? I mean, if I was sitting on a committee, and I don't have a background in this, but from a third-grade level, if I opened it up and everybody ranked a complete zero, I'd raise my hand and go, something's not right here. Did everybody completely miss the boat? Is everybody confused, or is this how it's played out? Now, I asked the question, did the recommendation change at all during the process? And the answer was no. I think if we pulled this back, rebid and moved forward, everybody's gonna come back with all their subs, and all the different subcategories of property management, and I bet everybody would hit that 10% mark, which means that the scores would be the same. Does that make sense? So I'm gonna support the recommendation on the table. However, I gotta tell you, I'm frustrated, again, two major contracts have come before us, and both times, one time, we did send it back, and this time, it's been called into question as well, the MWBE requirement, and I think we need to put some attention and make sure that we clarify and everybody's on the same page as we released RFP.
Yes, sir, I understand, if I could add to that, so it was, it was re-inspected, and it is a very prescriptive process, and the essence of it is, it's an obligatory process, it's not an aspirational process.
Correct.
And so I hear you, I think we need to inspect how it's understood, and to Commissioner Williams-Cox's point, we must hold the proposers accountable, not from an aspirational standpoint, but from an obligation and then a tracking, so, yes, sir, thank you for your words.
I understand, and this is difficult, because both organizations are good friends, both organizations have supported me in the past, and this is a difficult decision to make, but they're also two of the most well-respected property management firms in North Florida, and I find it hard to believe that you use absolutely no minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses as subs. I think that there's a confusion within the process that needs to be clarified, because I'm looking at Benji, and I'm looking at Ed, and I'm sitting here going, y'all have been in this business long enough to know that, yes, that's what qualifies as a sub. So the fact that nobody listed anything, just to me, are we clarifying enough? And are we making as clear as we possibly can? I mean, again, I will support the motion on the table, because I don't think the scores would change at all, at the end of the day, by reissuing the RFP, but to say that I'm happy with how we got to this point is an understatement. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I'll, I'll say that neither company supported me, however, I, so, just, just keeping it real, neither company supported me, but I do believe that we need to, and I know the procurement manager said that our pre-bid conferences are sometimes optional or mandatory, we need to make the pre-bid conferences mandatory, because it is, it is here where those kinds of questions up front could have been resolved, what do you mean by minority participation? And if the, the form that is to be completed is not clear, we need to get some clarification, I like to see it myself, so please, somebody get it to me. I do have a little experience with this, I have worked with state purchasing, and I know what 287 says, and I know what the minority business participation is supposed to be, I was a certified minority vendor with the state of Florida, this can't be rocket science. So what we need to do is, I will support, because there is a process, we've gone through the process, but I'm just, I'm like the mayor, I'm frustrated, I don't, I don't want another process to come to us where MBE is the sticking point, I'm, I'm gonna lose it if that happens, because we can't keep making the same mistakes over and over again.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, pro tem.
And Madam Attorney, you might want to direct me on how to do this, according to the, the city attorney, my language in the motion needs to be changed, so do I?
You can withdraw your prior motion, and then make a new motion.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor, I would withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
Okay.
Sure.
And so then, my motion would be, Mr. Mayor, that we direct the City Manager to negotiate some level of MWSBE participation with the eventual awardee of this contract.
Second.
Right, so, so your motion would be to negotiate with the winning bidder for some level, if possible, of MBE participation.
Right.
Second.
Okay, and, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I, I don't think that there's any confusion at all, these requirements have been around for decades now, I think everybody is clear on what MWSBE, if I got the acronym right, those requirements are, and if you aren't, as an astute businessman, and I know these gentlemen to be astute business people, if you see that, and there's some question, then you ask, and I'm not sure that the question was asked, and so I think what the message that we're sending here to see is, we're serious about this, that we're not gonna accept bids where people just ignore that requirement altogether, and don't even ask about it. And I agree, Commissioner Williams-Cox, it should be a part of the discussion in the pre-bid conference, that the city is serious about this, and if you got a question, ask, and, and, and that when, when this, when this contract comes back for final approval, that's what's gonna be expected and looked for, and I'm not happy at all seeing not only zero participation, but not even an effort to make that happen, when there are subs out there, I, I, I mean, I know lawn people and plumbers and even realtors that do property management, that could have had some part in this, and so, again, like I said, I think the message that we are sending here this afternoon is that we are serious about that, and if there is any question, because I don't believe there's any confusion, this has been around long enough that everybody should understand what MWSBE participation means, and if you're serious about it, then that should be a part of your proposal when you submit a bid to the city of Tallahassee for services.
Motion on table, properly made by the Mayor, pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 4-0.
Mr. Mayor, I would move staff recommendation on item, is that 10.02? Yes, 10.02.
I'll second.
Motion's been properly made by the Mayor, pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Bryant, I apologize, any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0, Commissioner Matlow out of chambers for both votes. I'm gonna pass the table to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, item 1101 involves the approval of appointments to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, I'd like to read the recommended action, I'm gonna make a modification.
Okay.
Based on the unavailability of one of the recommended participants. Staff recommends the approval of the appointment members to serve on the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, and to ratify Mayor Daley's appointment of Steve Beasley, ratify Commissioner Matlow's appointment of Matthew Isbell, ratify Commissioner Williams-Cox's appointment of Darwin Gamble, ratify Commissioner Bryant's appointment of Marilyn Henderson, and Commissioner Richardson, I understand Ms. Dan Scott is no longer available to serve on the committee.
Yes, I, Mr. City Manager, she is going to, she just found out yesterday that because of her new employment, she's gonna be moving out of town, so we have been desperately trying to get a substitute appointment for her, and as of right now, where's AK? We, we've contacted several people today, and still have not gotten a commitment, so we, as soon as we get a confirmation of a commitment, we'll submit that name.
And Commissioners, I would recommend moving forward with the four.
Yes.
Appointees, the first meeting of this committee, I believe is in the first week of October, it will be recorded, and I think anytime we have another person that can serve, we could take that issue up at that time.
Okay, Commissioners, is there a motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously with the mayor out of the chamber for reasons that I won't discuss. No, I'm kidding. All right, item number 11.2, approval of appointments, or reappointments to the Tallahassee-Leyton County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir, staff recommends the approval of the reappointment of Linda Bond Edwards, selected by Commissioner Lane Bryant, the approval of the reappointment of Amber Tynan, selected by Commissioner Jeremy Matlow, and the approval of the reappointment of Andrea Jones, which is selected by the commission at large.
Is there a motion?
Move acceptance.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign, of motion, the motion carries unanimously with the mayor out of the chamber. Mr. City Manager, item number 12.01, or Madam Attorney, introductions of ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, pro tem. Item number 12.01 is introduction of ordinance number 19-0-22, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Tallahassee Land Development Code, adding funeral homes to the list of permitted principal uses in the light industrial M1 zoning district, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date, the first of two public hearings scheduled for October 16, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Comm, City Commission Chambers at City Hall, the second and final public hearing is scheduled for November 13, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall, that the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Okay. Sure, any questions for the City Attorney? Any comments? Wonderful, thank you. Okay, colleagues, we are, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Madam Attorney.
Item number 13.01.
Before, before we go into 13.01, this is the Ethics Code update.
Yeah.
This is gonna be a long conversation, I am looking at the clock, it is 5:25, do we want to jump in now and work straight through, and pick up the public hearing at 6:00?
Right.
Or I am gonna suggest that we take a dinner break, come back at 6:00 for the public hearing, and pick up general business and policy formation and direction after the public hearing.
I'd support that, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good, we stand adjourned, we'll be back at 6:00 for the public hearing. [applause] Item 15.01, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Do you want to make some comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll.
Sorry, Mr. Manager.
Cue this, so, this is, this is the last step in the approval of your fiscal year 2020 budget, it's been, it's been a journey, I think it's been a good one, but it's been filled with a lot of input and a lot of good direction, and we find ourselves here at the last stop in the process, and so just to kind of level-set the conversation, I'd like our Director of Resource Management, Robert Wigan, to provide a brief summary, and then, of course, as you know, the City Attorney will walk us through the very exhaustive process that, that's necessary.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager, appointed officials, Commissioners, Mayor and Commissioners, as you well know, this is, we've given you this view of the 14 operating funds, it's an all-encompassing view of what we'll be taking the final step today to approve, it will be our general fund, as well as our enterprise fund, operating budgets, there are 14 operating funds that total $899.5 million, those are, are a combination of our operating budget and our capital budget across those 14 funds. Today, we'll be walking through the steps to receive public comment on the millage rate and the budget for both the city and the downtown improvement authority, we'll also then, after that public input, go through an adoption of the final millage rate and the final budget for the city and for the downtown improvement authority, and then we'll adopt a balanced budget for October 1, 2019, to September 30 of 2020. As you well know, the, the budget's highlighted by some of the bullets that I've identified here, it's a public safety, investment in infrastructure, economic development, quality of life, and an impact on poverty, addressing those priorities. Unless you have any particular questions, the City Attorney stands by to walk you through the 10-step process to, to hear public comment and, and adopt the budget.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, there are certain things I need to read into the record, and then we'll take public comment on the millage rate and on the proposed budget for the city and the downtown improvement authority, that staff has just discussed with you. After you've heard the public comment, and before you vote on the budget, there will be time for your discussion of the proposed budget. This is the second and final hearing on the, on the fiscal year 2020 budget, this final hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Saturday, September 21, 2019. Neither the, neither the date of the first hearing, September 11, nor today's date conflicts with any county commission or school board meeting hearing dates. Again, I need to read the following statement into the record, the proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2020 is 4.1 mils for the city of Tallahassee, and 1 mil for the downtown improvement authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9454 by 3.9%. This tentative millage rate is equal to last year's rate of 4.1 mils. Attached to the agenda item is resolution number 19-r-37, which states the percentage that the final millage rate is more than the rollback rate. Now it is time for the public to speak on the city's millage rate and proposed city budget. At this time, I'll call for speakers on the final proposed millage rate.
We do have several speakers, Mayor, on the budget, assuming at this millage rate time is.
Well, we can do the, we can call for speakers on both, if you would like, so we can call for speakers both on the millage rate and the budget.
I'll call the, I'll call the individuals, they've indicated budget, but they may be interested in the millage rate as well, so, the first speaker would be Michael Rosenthal, followed by Jules Bailey.
Mr. Rosenthal, thank you for joining us. You were naming the address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Michael Rosenthal, 4045 Kilmartin Drive, and I am here today to address your budget and the millage rate, and also get some free air conditioning. So, in the past, I've attended budget hearings many years ago, and I came and I spoke on two issues, one was the tax rate, and to use the rollback millage rate. Homeowners do not benefit from rising home values until they sell their homes, so why should the city be benefiting? Even if you keep the millage rate the same, increasing the home values make our tax bill go up. You do have the option to use the rollback millage rate, and I encourage you to do so. The other issue that I spoke about were pay increases to city employees, and I don't mean to attack city employees, I think they, the ones that I've spoken to have been very knowledgeable and helpful, but many years ago, I tallied up all the pay increases between 2008 and 2013, and I came up to a total pay increase of 18 and 1/2%. This was during a horrible economic time that we were going through, and then compared on the Census Department, median family income for our area only went up 4.18%. And this didn't seem fair to me, I know many of you consider yourselves progressives, and this, having this disparity in income growth of public employees so much greater than the private citizens is an injustice, and I think it would be a, it's a matter of social justice, and I, I would hope and encourage you to do studies before you. before you make budgets in the upcoming year. When you analyze your budget and you're making salary increases, please make it so that the employees' salaries won't grow faster than median family income. I believe somebody said we have government by the people, of the people, government of the people, by the people, and for the people. But what we have here, maybe why you don't like that, I think a Republican said that, but, but we have here is government of the government, by the government, and government for the government. Because the citizens, the government should not be doing better than the citizens. So I hope you can, in the future, look at these two issues and address them, and have some compassion on taxpayers in the upcoming year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Mr. Clerk?
Next speaker is Jules Bailey, she'll be followed by Dr. Hollifield.
Ms. Bailey, it's good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jules Bailey. I live at 1919 Dossie Street, and I'm here to comment on the budget this evening, so. First off, I am happy to see that you have a $12 minimum wage on the budget, and that you're one to invest in our sidewalks and roads. I think it's good to lead by example and provide a living wage for, for your employees, and also to, and also to provide for our infrastructure. I know the citizens are very interested in that due to some meetings I went to late last year and early this year. I did want to comment on the first two line item budgets that I saw, or rather, the summary that I saw when I was here last time, two weeks ago, that you were investing $2.1 million in police technology and $1 million in police salaries. I tried to find out what these, what these, what this equipment was for, and I think it might be for active shooter equipment, license plate readers in neighborhoods, and the bond cameras, based on a Democrat article, but I'm not sure because that wasn't laid out in the summary or any time in the last meeting. I also don't know if $1 million in police salaries is for, is part of a regular wage increase, if that is going, if you're going to increase someone's salary by a lot. Maybe you are, maybe you're not. I do not know because it was not laid out. So about these things, as with the police headquarters last year, or earlier this year, I would like to ask for more transparency. I did receive one of your letters about possible locations for the new Tallahassee Police Department headquarters. I appreciate that transparency, and I would like transparency with other items in the budget as well, especially regarding the police, because that affects all of our citizens. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Hollifield. He'll be followed by Jordan Scott.
Dr. Hollifield, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, in three minutes, please.
Dr. Hollifield. Big Ben Care.
Dr. Hollifield, your address, real quick?
Longleaf Court. $57,000 for what? Selling artwork? No effectiveness audit? We just hand it to them. We already gave them $1.5 million, shall I remember that? That was over the community's objection. Over the South Side and French Town folks' objection. We gave it to them anyway. And now they're back for a second bite of the apple? Based on what? White power? Second bite of the apple? And you remember when they called, referred to Commissioner, Commissioner Cox as a protester? When she was out there protesting with us? Protester? That's how they described her. And they called two police on me with guns. Now I just want to tell you, when a white man calls the police on a black man, that can be a death sentence. And I got the police called on me by Rinzey for going to a meeting of the TCC. At least he threatened to call the police. So what is this, just some kind of big bullying? They threatened Sylvia Hubbard with arrest. They're suing Sylvia Hubbard, an attempt to drive her out of business. They were found in federal court to have defamed one of their own clients, one of their aides' clients. They should have never gotten that money. Jeffrey Pope. Defamation, federal court, $35,000 judgment. They should have never gotten the money. And is there any proof they ever cleaned up all that contamination? And then we have Whole Child Leon. I call them half-chileon because they get things right half the time. $68,000 for what? They wouldn't even support me on breastfeeding. They didn't help me when I was trying to get that free infant formula out of Marco Brand's hospital delivery bag. Infant mortality has been ignored for decades. No apparent increase, interest in the increasing rate of school segregation in Leon County. Southern Strategy on their board, which represents legged tobacco. The fourth largest tobacco country, company in the country is on the board of Whole Child Leon. They could buy Southern Strategies, or whatever they call themselves, they could buy the whole state and still have change left over. So why is Whole Child coming to us? For money? When they have that kind of financial power on their board? It doesn't make any sense.
Dr. Hollifield, a second.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
You could please wrap up your comment.
Right. And then Whole Child Leon, Leon's, Lorraine Osley, I've said over and over, she voted for the Koch brothers, stand your ground. Only thing that did was help get Trayvon Martin killed.
Dr. Hollifield, if you could please wrap up your comments.
Okay, and just one other thing. Tallahassee Memorial Hospital, they asking for $50,000? For what? They just spent $271 million on that mustang Taj Mahal.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
We shouldn't be giving them anything. And they have a 20-member board of directors, no black women, and they pay the janitors a reported $9.25 an hour.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
They shouldn't get a dime from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jordan Scott, and that's the final speaker I have on the millage and budget.
Great. Mr. Scott, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
Yes, my name is Jordan Scott. I live at 2291 Hartsfield Way, in 32303. I just want to start off, I don't think that, I think at this point it's too late to really make any changes to the budget. I understand that, which is why one thing, I think that when these budget meetings are occurring, other than just right at the end, you know, we need to make these at accessible times. They can be variable times, but, you know, if they're not, I work 8 to 5 for the state. If they're at accessible times, I will be there as much as I can. Because I want to know as much as I can, learn about how these budgets work, so that we can, so that we can fix them, so that they do things for the people that I assume most of you want to be doing for the people. We may disagree on, on how that actually gets done. I do want to say one thing, the $12 minimum wage, excellent, excellent. I don't know if the other gentleman that spoke really understands how wages work, but that does come from political pressure. If you really want to see the incomes of the general population go up, one great thing to do is for the City of Tallahassee to set an example and increase wages for that, because then other companies, private companies, have to increase their wages, otherwise they might leave for the city. Another thing, probably another big reason why wages have stagnated in Tallahassee is because state wages have stagnated, that's the largest, that's the largest employer in the City of Tallahassee. And the way that we increase wages across the board is by building unions. I think people are aware of that, are becoming increasingly aware of that. That would be something huge for the city to do, moving forward, for their city employees. There's some things about the budget that are still kind of unclear to me, fuzzy, that I'm not sure. There's, there's obviously different levels to this budget. There's the general budget, and then in the, within the general budget, there's the sort of the police budget, and then there's also the, I've asked this a few times, where the money, because it's obviously not in the general budget, I didn't think so, but the, the budget for the police station's coming from somewhere else, it's being allocated from somewhere. We don't really know where that money's being allocated from. I want to just finish off in terms of the budget. I, my car broke down, I live on the northwest side of town, and I was transporting to Southwood. Public transportation in Tallahassee is atrocious. It is absolutely horrendous, and we need to do something about that moving forward. I know it's, Tallahassee's not exactly a mid-sized city, like, mid-sized cities in the Midwest are really having light rails. Maybe we're not quite there in terms of the size of the city. But, I mean, on the weekends, yeah, I mean, really, it's like, on the weekends, how many buses, you know, there's five buses that go in this sort of weird loop. All the buses, if they run, end at least, no later than 9:00 during the week. I mean, this is, this is outrageous. This, this is crazy, I mean, and, and what, the thing is that maybe you think that we don't have the, the, people want to drive cars, but as you improve public transportation, more people will ditch their cars for public transportation. And just one other thing, if you want to think forward, like, they were talking about this thing, I know my time is out, but if you're talking about this thing on the south side with the, with the road, I'm not sure it's supposed to help traffic in the future.
Thank you.
If you really want to help traffic in the future, you improve public transportation right now.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Certainly do appreciate you coming out.
No other speakers.
All right, Madam Attorney?
Thank you. At this point in time, we need to allow public input on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage rate, which is 1 mill, and the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget of $328,839, as presented on this, on September 11. This hearing for the Downtown Improvement Authority has been advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on September 21, 2019, in compliance with the Florida statute, Section 200.065. At this time, we'll call for public speakers on the Downtown Improvement Authority's final proposed millage rate, and public speakers on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed final budget.
I have no speakers on the Downtown Improvement Authority.
Is there anyone here that would wish to speak on Downtown Improvement Authority? I see a hand. Dr. Hollifield? Name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Dr. Hollifield? What improvement? I mean, we still got springtime Tallahassee. That's a racist insult to us all. Springtime Tallahassee, year after year after year, and nobody questions it? They talk about all the money it's going to bring in? But it's ridiculous. Native Americans don't think it's all that great. And for good reason. And then when you look at all the money y'all spent on the CRA, I mean, Proctor over there at the county was saying, people come to the football games, FAMU games, say they don't have no place to stay. They stay over in Panama City, all the hotels are, they've gouged their rates. Nobody can afford all that madness. You have people coming to the FAMU Southern game who couldn't afford to stay in Tallahassee. And that's why we, after we paid for all these hotels, Doubletree Hotel, what, what we give them? $800,000? Almost a million dollars? With Mad Dog Construction doing the work? Marriott? Duval? It goes on and on, on and on. We pay all that money, and then when we need them, they turn around and gouge us. I mean, y'all should have some kind of anti-gouging policy. Especially for the hotels to get all this CRA largess, which they shouldn't have gotten in the first place. Springtime Tallahassee. All these hotels. And for what? And a football game comes here for FAMU, you can't even go to it. You can't, you can't afford the prices. What you think about that, Curtis? What you think about people getting gouged routinely for football games, graduations? Don't matter. And keep in mind, we pay all this money. You know, to all these institutions. I mean, they're laughing at us. They're laughing at us. I'm sure them Doubletree people are laughing at us. And we give Marriott a bunch of money, too? You run out of, you can't remember all the people we hand out all this money? We hand out millions of dollars like water. And nobody thinks twice about it. If somebody from Louisiana tries to come here for a football game, and the rates are so high, they can't even rent a room. If somebody comes here for the child's graduation, we done given the hotel millions of dollars, and they can't afford the rates. I mean, y'all need to get serious. Really. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield. Our next speaker?
I have no other speakers.
Anyone else here that'd like to speak to the budget? Proposed millage rate of Downtown Improvement Authority? Seeing none, Madam Attorney?
Thank you. At this point, Mayor, we need a motion for approval of the city's final millage rate of 4.1 mills, as reflected in Resolution 19-R-37, the title of which reads as follows. A resolution establishing the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, as 4.1 mills for the City of Tallahassee and 1 mill for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is greater than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9454 by 3.9% and providing an effective date. And the millage rate is more than the rollback rate. May I have a motion for the approval of the final millage rate?
Is there a motion on the table?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any comments? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate at this time for the Commissioners to discuss the budget of the city and the Downtown Improvement Authority. First is discussion of the city budget.
Any discussion? We have been through this process for many, many, many months. I am very pleased, it was not easy. Sometimes we find, find ourselves at our wits' end, but we made it, and we have a balanced budget. Any other comment? Madam Attorney?
The next step, step eight, is to approve the final fiscal year 2020 budget, as reflected in the Appropriations Resolution Number 19-R-38, the title of which reads as follows. A resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the City of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, designating the sources of revenue and said appropriations, and providing an effective date. And which reflects all changes to the proposed budget that were previously approved by the City Commission. May I have a motion for the approval of the 2020 budget, as reflected in Resolution Number 19-R-38?
Motion's been made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any comment? Any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney?
May I have a motion for the approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's final millage rate of 1 mill, and more, and a motion for approval of Resolution 19-R-37?
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney?
Now we need a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's final fiscal year 2020 budget, which totals $328,839, and Resolution Number 19-R-38.
Does it move?
Been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney?
That concludes the Commission's required actions on the fiscal year 2020 budget for the City of Tallahassee and the Downtown Improvement Authority.
Colleagues, I am very proud to serve with you. That is probably the most important thing that we can do on an annual basis, is to pass a balanced budget by law, which we have done in our first term. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication. We are now on item number 15.02. Mr. City Manager?
Madam Attorney?
Madam Attorney?
Thank you. Item number 15.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 19-0-21AA, an ordinance amending the general code of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, deleting Section 21-181, amending Section 21-402 related to various rates and charges for sewer services, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This proposed ordinance was modified since introduction to add back two sentences which were inadvertently stricken from the current ordinance regarding strong waste requirements.
Mr. Clerk? Do we have any public speakers?
We have no speakers on item 15.02.
Is there anyone here that would wish to speak on 15.02? Seeing none? Open it up, Commissioner Comment? Open it up, Commissioner, comment?
Move staff recommendations, Mayor.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes four-zero with Commissioner Matlow out of chambers. Fifteen-point-oh-four.
Item number fifteen-point-zero-three is the first and only, only public hearing on ordinance number nineteen dash O dash thirty-four, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Tallahassee amending sections ten, twelve, thirteen, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, forty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and sixty-five of the charter of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, changing these sections to reflect gender neutrality, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
No speakers on this item.
Is there anyone here from the general public that wishes to speak on fifteen-point-oh-three? Seeing none? We'll turn it over for Commission Comment.
Um, I would like.
Commissioner Williams Cox?
I would like to make a comment here.
Sure.
We have, um, dealt with a couple of items in our city charter, dealing with, um, gender and some other things. I, I'm hoping that we can move forward, um, in 2020 to have a review of our charter to make sure that we bring it into the 21st century, uh, uh, not just on those gender items, but on many other items. So, um, I'm looking down at the, uh, the city commissioner, I mean, I'm, I'm not city commissioner, city manager, uh, to, to, to say, um, can we start looking at possibly what we need to do to look at the charter, to, um, do a wholesome look instead of, because we've gone in it a couple of times, made a change here and a change there, those things that we can do without citizens having to make it a referendum. Uh, I don't know what that process is, but I'd like to know what that process is so we can start looking at it.
Uh, Commissioner, I'll, I'll be, give you a brief answer. I think we can explore it more. What you're describing is a charter review process. Uh, in the city's charter, there's no automatic review. Some charters include that, where you periodically, uh, re-inspect, um, your charter for appropriateness and any contemporary issues. Uh, that happens periodically. The last charter review for the city was about 10 years ago, my recol- if my recollection serves me, and that's certainly a direction that, um, you and your colleagues can provide us. It's a very exhaustive process, um, one that would be led by a committee, uh, that you would select and, and culminate in any decisions that you would make. So, uh, if, if, uh, the mayor and commissioners would like to explore that more, we certainly could entertain it.
Excellent. So, Commissioner, I'll weigh in as well. I am in full support of a full charter revision commission, uh, to provide full review of the entire city charter. I agree it is something that should be done every 10 years. We do not have provisions in our city charter to do so. The question is, do we have the time to do it correctly with a full charter review, uh, to be placed on the 2020 ballot? I don't think so.
Maybe not.
But why don't we do this? I, um, first of all, I'm going to look to you for a motion on the actual agenda item. And then I'm going to come back to you for a motion to, um, why don't we have the city manager bring back an agenda item with a full vetting of, okay, this is what goes into it, this is how it works, this is the timeframes we're talking about, so we have an idea of what we're looking at. But I, but I'm with you. I'm fully in favor of a full charter review, um, but I don't know if we have the time to do it for 2020, but let's get the ball rolling.
And that's what, that's exactly what I'm saying. Let's get the ball rolling.
Sure. Sounds great. Wonderful. Okay, any other comment on the agenda item before us? Okay, so Commissioner Williams Cox properly moves the...
Acceptance of the, um, the agenda update, the change that has been recommended in this agenda item.
Second. Properly, properly seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Before we go to the next agenda item, Commissioner Williams Cox, would you like to make a motion for staff to bring back an agenda item, providing the details and the schedule for a full charter review?
Yes, um, so moved.
And I will second it as well. Properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor and Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Great idea, Commissioner. Great idea. We are now on item number fifteen-point-oh-four.
Thank you. Item number fifteen-point-zero-four, the first and only public hearing on the Fifth Amendment to the Integrated Development Order for Southwood Development Regional Impact.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any members from the public here to speak on this item?
Mr. John Curtis is here to answer questions, otherwise we have no speakers.
Mr. Curtis, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else that is here that'd like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none? Mr. Curtis is here for questions, if we have any colleagues.
Move staff recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
Been pro- been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Thank you anyway for coming out. Uh, item number fifteen-point-oh-six.
Item number fifteen-point-zero-five, the first and only public...
Man, I'm off one, I'm sorry, but, I apologize.
The first and only public hearing on ordinance number nineteen dash Z dash twenty-six, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Again, no speakers on Mr. Curtis, if you have questions.
Wonderful. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item by chance? Seeing none? We'll turn it over to Commission Discussion.
Move staff recommendations, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Madam Attorney.
Item number fifteen-point-zero-six, the first and only public hearing on ordinance number nineteen dash O dash thirty-one, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Tallahassee amending section two dash two-two-seven of the Code of General Ordinances relating to Audit Committee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this agenda item?
We do not have speakers on this item, Mayor.
Excellent. Anybody here from the general public that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none? We'll turn to Commission Discussion. Commissioners? Any comments?
Uh, move staff recommendations.
Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox and Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Madam Attorney, do we have anything to come before us, anything further to come before us on the public hearing?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Manager, do you have anything to come before us on the public hearing?
No, sir.
All right, this ends our public hearing. We are back now on item number thirteen-point-oh-one.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to thirteen-oh-one.
Oh, of course.
Might I recommend, uh, we took up item eleven-oh-one earlier and Commissioner Richardson's original appointment had to, uh, was no longer available, and I believe we have a name now. If I could, uh, pause the process and, and, and have Commissioner Richardson make a motion?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, uh, members. I'd like to move that, uh, uh, Ms. Brittany Gathers, uh, be accepted as my appointee to the Complete Count Committee. She has confirmed to serve.
Second.
Excellent. Great. It's been properly moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. No further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Excellent. That's wonderful. She's willing to serve. Okay, now we are on item number thirteen-point-oh-one. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to recognize the Ethics Board Chair, Mr. Richard Herring. He's in attendance tonight, uh, as well as our Ethics Officer, um, Julie Meadows Keefe. Uh, and if, if you will indulge me, I, just to give a little framing to this item, this is an update item and, and, um, myself, city attorney, and treasurer clerk, we're looking for your feedback as we develop an agenda item for your October workshop, um, and so certainly, all the input that you can give us tonight will be productive. Uh, we put together, uh, a very short slide presentation that'll level set the discussion for tonight. Over the last year, since, uh, January, you have taken numerous actions toward being more transparent, toward, um, uh, securing or underscoring an ethical culture. Those include, uh, you've reviewed our ethics training, uh, which is very robust. You've held two commission meetings outside of City Hall. That was something you, you said was very important, and in fact, you have indicated your desire to do that again next year. You've expanded the notice radius for public hearings, eliminated the 30-minute time limit on public speaking, uh, increased opportunities for public, uh, speaking at commission meetings, adopted a new mission, vision, and value statement that was 22 years old, that were 22 years old, uh, and also added more information and accessibility regarding vendors and lobbyists to talgov.com. Uh, you discussed a no-gift policy at your April 24th meeting, along with many other comments, that included a discussion about, um, uh, generally gift policies, financial policies, and camp- campaign contributions. So during the last year, you've been active to, to work toward a more transparent and ethical culture. You have received in April of this year, uh, numerous recommendations, 11 recommendations by the Ethics Board involving changing the city's code ordinance recommendations. They range from, uh, straightforward items written, uh, regarding definitions and loyalty oath, um, ranging from penalties, misuse of public position. I won't read all of them. You can see 11 on the screen. Uh, that's what's being evaluated by the city attorney and compared to other jurisdictions. In addition to that, uh, there are a number of policy recommendations, uh, as you can see on your screen, rating, uh, regarding how you vote, when you vote, when you're absent, uh, compensate, compensation nepotism, and a variety of other things. Those largely will create the framework for the discussion in October, and, uh, Board Chair Herring is here tonight. You may wish him to make some comments if he desires, but most importantly, we're looking for you to accept the update and provide feedback as we kind of refine the discussion headed into the next meeting. Madam Attorney, would you like to add anything?
Just a few comments. Uh, we were and received, of course, of the recommendations of the Ethics Board and understand and accept their, their continuous work and efforts and appreciate their work and efforts on this, I believe, over what was a year-long process of review. Our office has taken the opportunity to examine other jurisdictions, as did they, and we want to, we will present to you some recommendations. We have kept in mind, uh, some of the events of the recent past, including the Department of Justice investigation, as well as Ethics Commission determinations, and we have factored those, we're factoring those into our recommendation, and also looking at what we see sometimes as redundancy, uh, in some of the matters which are regulated by the state, and then note the requests that are coming before you. So we'll be assessing all those things and providing you a recommendation.
Great. Do we have any public comment?
We do have speakers on this item, Mayor.
Excellent.
Uh, I think we have about four at this time, and we'll have more if somebody else brings me a speaker card.
Sounds great. Let me remind the general public that there is not actual, uh, ethics ordinance that will be approved this evening. We are still asking questions and getting clarification. This is part of, and by the way, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Ethics Officer for being here as well to answer questions. But this is still part of us having a clear understanding and be able to work together to move forward with creating this. We will have the workshop coming up. So the action at the end will be to, uh, accept the update and, you know, direct staff to prepare the recommended actions. I just want to be clear so that, um, set expectations, we are not passing an ethics ordinance tonight.
First speaker on the item is, um, Erwin Jackson. He'll be followed by Darrell Wills.
Dr. Jackson, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Erwin Jackson, 1341, uh, Jackson Bluff. I have a doctorate in counseling psychology, and over the last 10 years, I've earned a doctorate in City Hall corruption. It is great, I do want to say, that we have three new commissioners and a new mayor. That was almost worth my 10 years of effort. If you're really serious about minimizing the corruption in City Hall, I have a suggestion, and I think we all know the answer. You have to get money out of the election process. Each commissioner and mayor must run citywide and raise huge amounts of money. If they have to run citywide and raise this money unless you're independently wealthy, you usually will go out and hire a, uh, political campaign consultant, fundraiser. I call them a bagman, or a woman. For example, Marx had Sean Pittman. He would go out and shake down city contractors for lots of money. Uh, you had, uh, Scott Maddox. His activities have been very well documented, finally. His bag lady, Paige Carter Smith. Gillum, he was so damn good, he needed two bag ladies, two bag people, Adam Corey and Sean Pittman. Nancy Miller, she did her thing with Gary Jordan, and he was, uh, into advertising and raising money, et cetera, et cetera. We've got to stop the process. The way to do that is, I would suggest, we follow kind of what the county does. They have seven commissioners. I think we're a big city and we're talking a lot, about a lot of money, and I've heard the discussions today. We should have six single-member districts, and we should have a mayor that's elected by everyone in the community. If you have a small, specific district, a private individual can run in his local area, won't need big money, two or 300,000, and he can run and probably win without a bag person, lady or male. I would then propose, like I said, six single-member districts with the citywide bear, and what would that do? It would eliminate the, uh, need for large amounts of money. It would eliminate the campaign consultants, bag lady, bag men, having to raise some money. And then furthermore, these individuals would then come back and ask for contracts and additional, uh, funding from the city if their candidate was to win. You could eliminate all those problems. Two other things I would throw in, is, go on this list over here, is, one, your campaign managers, media consultants should not be allowed to, in, to receive city contracts.
Dr. Jackson.
Secondly, in my last point.
Wrap up your comments, Ed, would be great, sir.
All right, sorry. And then, the last thing would be, city, um, let's see, city contra- vendors and city contractors should not be allowed to fund, make donations to political campaigns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
Next speaker is Darrell Wells, uh, followed by Ben Wilcox.
Mr. Wells, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
That's Darrell Wills.
Wills, excuse me, Mr. Wills.
No, no problem. It's always a common mistake. Five-four-two-five, call to drive. The things I'm about to say at the, at this current time, I have all of the documents that I'd be glad to share with you all at some, uh, another time. My request, and I think it falls appropriate upon this, is that I think that the city has funded before the, and it may be still funding now, the Northwest Florida Black Business Investment Corporation. And my suggestion is that if, if you have and if you are, that you investigate that, because we have, over the past three years, been making this publicly known about what they're doing and have not done so far, and, and I will suggest that not one city dollar be wasted on this again, ever, because it's a good program that was set up by the state of Florida, by the governor of state, of the state, about 25 years ago. And it was set up to right some of the wrongs that was done for, for lending for black, for black businesses back then. It was, it's still a good program, but we have some bad people that's operating inside of it right now. One of the, one of the, the, the president that was over that is J.B. Williams, Julian Bobby Williams, who got arrested. Local pastor here in town as well, got arrested. Some of the board members, Harold Knowles, Keith Bowers, Sherwood Brown, Ronnie Adams, Brent Chumbler, Bob Enzer. There's been a lot of documents that we have given them over time, starting on July 5, 2016, given to Harold Knowles, and they have done nothing with them in order to right the wrongs that they've been doing inside of that. And my question is, is why? And if we're giving city dollars to that, we need to find out why that is actually taking place. Harold Knowles' statement to me was, when myself and Hillary Goldsmith met with him, was a very simple statement. I don't see any wrong that J.B. Williams has done to us, hadn't stolen any money from us. Well, if you're in charge, as a board member, in charge of oversight, whether he stole any money from you or not, but he's wronging the people that the money is going to, that is a problem. Then he said he's going to call a blacks-only meeting, leaving out Bob Enzer and Brent Chumbler. So I'm making all of this public record, because I've done it before, and I've been asking for assistance from all around the city to make sure this stuff gets rectified. So I'm coming before you all today to say the same thing. There's a lot of stuff been going wrong over there, and the money is being wasted, and the people have been taken advantage of. People have lost their businesses over the stuff that J.B. Williams has done and the board has allowed to have happened. So again, I have the documents. I'm willing to share them with you. I'm willing to sit down with you. I'm willing to stand up in front of anybody and say whatever it is, because I don't care. It's time for this nonsense to stop, and I will be the face of that if I have to, and we will keep doing this until it's done. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. I'm going to turn to the city manager for some comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of a funding relationship, but I certainly will look and confirm that for you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure we have the name correct. Is it, you said the Northwest Florida Black Business?
Yeah.
Or is that the, the Black Investment? Want to make sure we got the correct name.
It's the Northwest Florida Black Business Investment Corporation.
Okay.
The board, the Northwest Florida Black Business Investment Board is the oversight of that.
Thank you.
All right.
And, 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 Mr. City Manager, if he has some documentation that he wished to share, I'm interested in seeing it.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Wills, do you have that with you tonight? Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Ben Wilcox. Then Peter Buttstein.
Mr. Wilcox, thanks for staking around. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the commission. I'm Ben Wilcox, a member of the Coalition Citizens for Ethics Reform, and I live at 1719 Old Fort Drive. I'm here tonight in support of the proposed ethics ordinance put forward by your volunteer Independent Ethics Board. We have met with each and every one of you, most when you were campaigning for office, and you assured us that you understood that there was a need in Tallahassee to raise the ethics bar. Citizens of Tallahassee passed our charter amendment in 2014 by 67% of the vote. That was the amendment that created the Ethics Board. And that was before we learned that the FBI was investigating city government. I think if that charter amendment was on the ballot today, it might be the first to pass by unanimous vote. This community is desperate for city government to send a signal that you get it. Ethics matter. We don't tolerate corruption. You want to bring new business and jobs to Tallahassee? Send a signal that we are not pay-to-play. Instead, we need to assure the country and the world that Tallahassee is an ethical government. We hope you will work constructively with the Ethics Board to give the city of Tallahassee a world-class ethics code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Buttstein is the next speaker, and that is the last speaker card I have on this side.
Mr. Buttstein, it's good to see you, sir. To the microphone, since we're being...
My name is Peter Buttstein, 1628 Woodgate Way. I work with the coalition that Ben Wilcox is involved in, and I just wanted to say that if possible, I'd prefer to hold any comments that I might have, and I may have no comments, until after we've heard questions and comments from the mayor and other commissioners.
Now's the time, actually. Once we clear out, there'll be a time at the end of the meeting for public comment as well. And of course, I invite you to stick around if you want to, but on this particular agenda item, now is the time to speak, because then we will go into commission discussion, and we're going to hear a presentation, I'm sure, from the chairman of the Ethics Board and the Ethics Officer. Setting the precedent on all of the agenda items. That's how I'm going to...
If I feel compelled to say anything, I will wait until the end.
That'd be great.
I would only add that I support what Mr. Wilcox has indicated. I'm here on behalf of Common Cause and the Citizens for Ethics Reform. We worked hard to put this on the ballot, and it's time for action, and we look forward to working with you in October at the workshop meeting. I had not planned to say anything here tonight, but then I heard that there were going to be perhaps some questions and comments that might put this at risk and in jeopardy. And if that happens, I will indeed have comments at the end of the meeting.
Sure. Great. Absolutely. Do we have any other public comment?
No, sir.
Anybody else here from the general public that would like to speak on this item? No. I would like to invite the chairman of the Ethics Board, Mr. Herring, it's good to see you, and our Ethics Officer, Julie. If y'all want to make a few comments or a presentation, or... The floor is yours.
Hi, Richard Herring, 1110 Ivanhoe Road. I was invited to be here. I don't have any comments. I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Okay. Great. Let's open it up. Colleagues. Did Julie have something to say?
The Ethics Officer.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity this evening, and no, I don't have a formal presentation. I am here to answer questions. I've been here since the inception of the Ethics Board, actually before it existed. So I think between Mr. Herring and myself, we can answer any questions you may have related to the board and its processes, but I believe we were asked to be here tonight as resources for all of you to advance your discussion and understanding, and I appreciate all of you for the time that you've spent in the past going through stuff with me. So with that, we're going to wait for your questions.
Excellent. Open it up. Colleagues. Commissioner Matt Leff.
Yeah, well, first off, thank you to the Ethics Board and all of your hard work in drafting these ordinances. I think after the ballot initiative passed, I think we got off to a bit of a rocky start. A lot of people have stated that they feel like the Ethics Board doesn't have any teeth, and how can we strengthen the relationship and strengthen their authority to really keep people in check? And I can't think of any time where it's more important than what we've experienced this year with the recent guilty plea, and when you read the statement effect signed by former Commissioner Scott Maddox, just how important it is to make sure we hold ourselves accountable, and that accountability is there. So I, we're in general discussion today, so I'm looking forward to the attorney's review of the ordinances. There's nothing really that gives me pause for concern. I'd love to see your insight on that, and I'd also think we should go a step further. Dr. Jackson mentioned prohibiting city vendors from being able to give campaign contributions. I would support that idea. I also support what I mentioned earlier, is if we allow them to contribute, they should disclose what they've contributed. So any city vendor and their principals, or any other associated companies that make campaign contributions to local elections or to political committees that engage in the local elections, they should disclose that as they become a city vendor, and we should post that on the website.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I also want to thank the Ethics Officer, as well as the board, for the work that you've done. It has taken, I think somewhere, I think I heard somebody say tonight, around a year for you to formulate this and to get it to us. And so I ask your patience, and it's taken a year for us to receive it. Give us a little time to chew on it, and not just expect that once you throw it over the fence, we're just going to swallow it wholesale and not analyze it and not do anything with it. And I can appreciate the urgency, but we got to make sure that what we do fits for our community, and we can't rush this. We didn't, you know, we didn't rush the formation. So what we need to do is, with legal review, as well as things that we are aware of and information that we have received, we have some ideas as well that we'd like to see in place. But I think that we should also, this commission should also be giving some credit for the items that the city managers went through. We've done, we've already done some things on our own, because several of us were newly elected, and we heard you. We met with you, and we heard you. So there were some things that we brought with us to try to get us along the road. Of course, we are open and ready to do whatever we need to do to send the right message to the community that we are operating ethically. And I'm eager to do that, but we've got to make sure that we do it right, because things are happening every day. And we don't know, we didn't know that we were going to inherit what we inherited. So we've got to have time to deal with it. And so I just ask your patience as we methodically work through this. Tonight, I was asked earlier today about this, but we all knew it was on the agenda for tonight, for it to begin its process. We have a workshop that's going to be open to the public, for the public to come in and for us to discuss. We just need time to digest, ingest, and analyze, and determine what works best for our community. Look at what others are doing in other places. Look at what the state of Florida is doing, and do the right thing. We're just, we just can't just take it because you threw it over the fence. We can't just digest it whole. We've got to dissect it and figure out what works. And so I'm going to thank you in advance for your patience, because we really need you to be patient with us so that we can get it right, or as right as we can get it.
I agree. Mr. Mayor, Brett Timm.
Just very briefly, I too want to thank the board and the citizen group for the work that they've done, but what I don't want any of us to leave here with is that all of this is predicated on the actions and behavior of one person. You know, I've lived in Tallahassee for 45 years now, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this is a new instance for us. I don't know of a previous commissioner that's been indicted for the kinds of wrongdoing that we're going through now. Correct me if I'm wrong. Ben, you've been around a long time. Am I, okay. So I just don't want us to think that there is corruption, a culture of corruption in City Hall, and that corruption is so rampant that we've got to impose all of these strict mandates and impositions. Ethics and morality start with the individual. You can't legislate ethics and morality if it's not what's in the individual's heart and the way they carry themselves. And that's why in 20 years of elective office, I've never had an ethics complaint filed against me. I've never been indicted for wrongdoing, because it's not in my heart. And so I, I think, and I agree, that there are policies that we need to put in place, and as Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox has said, we've started that process. But I don't want us to think that we have to impose these strict arcane rules and regulations on the city of Tallahassee when all of this is predicated on the actions of one individual. And that's what I keep hearing. I keep hearing people refer to one individual. It's not the city staff. It's not the commissioners that we see up here. I don't know of commissioners in the past that have been accused of that kind of wrongdoing. They've served honorably. And so whatever we do, I know it would be prospective in making sure that those things don't happen in the future. But I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that the city of Tallahassee is so infested with corruption, or has been in the past, that that's what this is predicated on, and not just the actions of the one or two individuals that have been mentioned. So I just wanted to put that out there. But I'm certainly looking forward to the workshop and the ideas and suggestions, not only coming from the board, but each of us and others in the community, about how we prospectively, and in a, in a way that is fair to everybody, put policies, additional policies in place to address this issue in our community. But I wouldn't say that we even come close to being the most corrupt city. I wouldn't even describe us as being a corrupt city. And those people who have, whose actions have gone beyond what is ethical or legal, they are being handled, or have been handled, in a process that has been set up for that. And so that's my position at this point, Mr. Mayor and colleagues.
Dr. Bryant.
Sure. What I'd like to say is that it's three, four of us that are new, but I think this commission has demonstrated over this year a commitment, really, to ethical behavior and to outreach to our community. I also believe that we do need to look at what we have in terms of rules, procedures, and we should constantly do that anyway. It's not just because of what happened. That's what we should be constantly doing, not just in the ethics area, but in all areas of how we operate. And I think that this workshop that's coming up, in addition to when we come back to actually discuss and make policy, take a vote, should be reflective of a methodical process that takes us from where we are, that helps us to understand where we're going, why we're going there, why are we doing what we're doing, such that we will be pleased with the result, not just in the next few months, but in years to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Any other comments or anything? Well, I'll jump in. I've got a couple of questions as well. And I absolutely agree with you. I think that we all campaigned on and came into office, and this has been one of our top priorities, is to pass an ethics package by the end of the year. And I stay committed that I think that we will dig in and we will pass a strong ethics package. A package, though, that is firm but fair. And I stand very strongly on that. Now, we have dug in, and I'm really trying to do my homework, as the Ethics Board suggested that we do, to make sure that we do pass a package that is firm and fair. I would like to start with the Ethics Officer, if you don't mind, a few questions. And then, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate your time, and I know it's late, and I have a few questions as well for you. First and foremost, how many calls on average do you receive on the hotline?
Mr. Mayor, the Ethics and Fraud Hotline receives, I would say, an average of between two and perhaps a maximum of four calls per month.
Right. Since January 1, 2019, your monthly tracking report indicated that you have tracked 25 complaints.
Right.
So out of the 25 complaints, roughly three a month, total 25, how many actually fell under the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board?
Most of them do not fall within the jurisdiction currently of the Ethics Board, and that's for a number of reasons.
Right. In fact, out of the 25 complaints, only two fell under the Ethics Board jurisdiction since January 1. In the five years that your office has been in existence, how many official sworn complaints has your office received? One. In five years of the office's existence, you have received one sworn complaint, I believe, that has actually gone before the full Ethics Board, correct?
Well, the Ethics Board has a process...
Sworn complaints that have been handed in. They have to be signed.
Right. Well, we've had more than one.
I believe you've had, well, I'm aware of the one that was filed last year, when Mayor Gillum won the nomination, and I believe the city sent out a tweet congratulating him appropriately. So, and that was filed. I'm trying to think of other ethics complaints, formal complaints. I'm only aware of one in five years.
Well, the Ethics Board has gone into its probable cause process more than once.
Well, you've only had one complaint filed in five years. So moving forward, what role does your office play in receiving and fulfilling public records requests? And how is this any different from the Treasurer Clerk's office as well?
The Ethics Board, several years ago, in response to public comment, that the Ethics Board be more of a watchdog in the community, be more proactive in looking for issues that may be troubling...
I'm sorry. Repeat that.
Okay. You're asking about public records requests...
Correct.
...and the board's role, and the part of the meeting each month where the board reviews public records requests.
Actually, your office's role in public records requests, not the Ethics Board, your office as the Ethics Officer. How is that different from the Treasurer Clerk's office for public records?
The Treasurer Clerk's office simply copies my office on all public records requests, and this was at the request of the board, that they wanted to see issues of interest. So I don't do anything unless it's about records that I have for myself, but the board does look at those each month.
What standards do you use to determine the merits of an anonymous complaint that comes in either via email or the phone?
Email or the phone.
What standards do you use to determine the merits of an anonymous complaint that comes into your office?
We look at the factual allegations, and if the factual allegations, if proven true, constitute a violation of the city ethics code, then we would evaluate that is something that falls within the board's jurisdiction. Now, that's equivalent to... Now, that's equivalent to minus the anonymous part. Minus the anonymous part, it's the same process utilized by the Florida Commission on Ethics.
Okay, that's a good point.
It's a desk evaluation.
That's a good point. Seeing how in five years you've only had one formal complaint, so the majority of the business, if not 99% of the business that you're dealing with, is anonymous phone calls or emails that come in. You've only had one complaint in five years. So the majority of the business before the Ethics Board is the anonymous communications. Now, what you're referring to is Rule 1.03 Subsection C, which provides guidelines for establishing the legal sufficiency of filed sworn complaints. Why are there no legal sufficiency guidelines for informal anonymous complaints? That is my question.
Because to evaluate legal sufficiency, one does not need to evaluate the complainant, one just looks at the bare factual allegations of the complaint. And, Mr. Mayor, very respectfully, I'd like to say that this Board hasn't just had one complaint in five years. I can rattle them off to you by memory because they're burned there, if you would like, but there have been more than one.
Just, that would be great. You could just submit the sworn copies of the complaints to the office. We'd love to see them. That'd be great. But further on this point, why do your administrative procedures, that was adopted by the Board in June, contain no mention of the hotline or how informal and anonymous complaints are handled? Your Board bylaws state that all hotline calls and complaints within the jurisdiction of the Board, including but not limited to local corruption, fraud, waste, mismanagement, campaign finance, conflicts of interest, corruption, ethics code violations, and voting conflicts, shall be given a tracking number and reviewed by the Ethics Officer or referred. Why are you tracking items that don't even fall within the jurisdiction of the Board?
Okay.
Like when somebody calls and complains about the seating in City Hall chambers, which that has happened.
Am I recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, respectfully, the hotline was set up prior to me even coming here. It was initially a function of the City Auditor's Office. It then became a function of the Ethics Board to have that hotline. It rings directly into my office. The Board, in its processes, from inception, wanted a way to look at, for accountability and transparency, the kinds of telephone calls and inquiries the Board Office was getting. So therefore, we generate that spreadsheet each month, which now I think has 175 or 176 things on it. It's not that the Board necessarily has jurisdiction, it's that the Board wants accountability from me, from my office, on the types of things we get so that we can start thinking about other areas we may want to think about. So, Mr. Mayor, you've made a very good point, that a lot of the calls we get aren't relevant to the Board, but you know what? Each one of those calls allows us to do is educate the public about the role of the Board, what we do and don't do, and right now that list is rather short, and then refer that individual to the right place to complain, for lack of a better word. So the spreadsheet is simply a tracking mechanism for the Board, for me to report what I get. A lot of the matters are closed at the desk. If it's a matter that is within the Board's jurisdiction, then the Board may want more information about that. We do this reporting in an anonymous way, meaning in the history of that spreadsheet, there's no name utilized, and to the extent possible, we try to be very general. Sometimes there's a matter that can be recognized, but this is the Board's process, it's not mine.
One thing that I think that we could work together on is within the administrative procedures, specifically the ones that were adopted in June by your Board, we should put reference into the anonymous complaint system and have rules and procedures on how to address those. The bylaws seem to clearly separate Ethics Officers' duties with regard to sworn complaints and hotline calls. Quote, "The Ethics Officer's duties and responsibilities are to provide a report and recommendation on each ethics complaint to the Board for review and all issues raised through the hotline." That's in your bylaws, Article 5, Board Staff, Section A, Subsection 2E. I understand that the bylaw article, 9A Subsection 1, says that the Ethics Officer will maintain a log of all calls received by the Ethics and Fraud Hotline and any complaints received using the Board's form. Ethics Officer will provide this log at every regularly scheduled meeting, but maintaining and providing a log to the Board is not the same as investigating or providing recommended actions. It appears that because of the lack of volume, anonymous and unverified claims are treated nearly the same as formal complaints. Why has it been your practice to make recommendations on Board action with regard to hotline and other non-formal and non-sworn complaints when the bylaws instruct you to simply review these calls and inquiries?
Mr. Mayor, that's a good question, and you're going to have to give me a moment to actually answer it because there's many levels to what you've asked.
Okay.
Okay. So, number one, you asked about the process for anonymous complaints. The Board at inception, from its first meetings, talked about the role of anonymous complaints. There was a review of practices from Ethics Boards all over the country, many of them utilized sworn complaints, okay? But this Board made a different choice. This Board decided that it was going to accept anonymous complaints. So that was a Board decision. The Board decision's been reviewed a number of times, and they have stuck with that. Now, the process for an investigation on an anonymous complaint, for me, is the same, sworn or unsworn, in that if someone says that, and I can't, I'm not good at thinking of examples off the top of my head, but I'm looking at it, and it falls within the four corners of a possible ethics code violation, even though it's anonymous, it's going on the spreadsheet disguised as possible. The Board then, after it has a discussion, if they decide they don't want to close it, the Board can and has in the past say, Julie, we would like to have more information on this particular issue. Please proceed to get more information, meaning investigate, interview witnesses, get documents. The Board then goes into a closed meeting the next month, or whenever they can schedule it, and they do a legal sufficiency analysis. Now, we're cycling back to the anonymous complaint rule. So we've gotten the anonymous complaint, the Board has said, Julie, I want more information. We've now gone into a executive session with a court reporter, and I think in most cases we have not found legal sufficiency, so it's been closed. In the event, however, Mr. Mayor, that the Board believes there's been a violation of the city ethics code, and there's an anonymous complaint, the Board's conscious of the ordinance that says a penalty can only be assessed against one of the nine individuals if there's a sworn complaint. So we know, we can't prosecute to a punishment unless there's a sworn complaint. So that's where the Board would step in, Mr. Mayor, and initiate a complaint on their own. So at that legal sufficiency stage, if they felt that there was a violation, the Board has determined through legal counsel that it's got that ability to self-initiate, so we would swear it out. So the Board would step into the shoes of the anonymous complainant and do the sworn complaint document.
So everything that you just said is nowhere to be found in your administrative procedures, nowhere to be found in your bylaws, nowhere to be found in writing, period. Only a sworn complaint from that point forward is actually referenced. So I recommend that we sit down and we work with the Ethics Board, specifically with your administrative procedures, on anonymous complaints that come through, so that we have a fair but firm process on every anonymous complaint. And that's great. I want to keep going. Mr. Chairman, I'm done with questions.
Are you done with me?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
May I ask if there's anyone else that wants to ask me a question?
Well, I'm on my time, and I'll be more than happy to go back.
The witness may be excused.
Okay. It's no problem. I can go all night, so.
Mr. Harren, you've been here all night, and I appreciate it. We're going to move through this real quick. My first question is, with the recommendations that came through, why did the Ethics Board remove completion of the Form 6 Financial Disclosure Form from its list of recommended changes? In November of 2018, the Ethics Board, part of the recommendations was, everybody should fill out the Form 6, which is the detailed financial form to the penny, but not on the final recommendations that came to us in April. Y'all removed the recommendation for a Form 6 Financial Disclosure, which I've always been in favor of. And I'm just curious as to, you know, knowing the financial nature of the charges against former Commissioner Scott Maddox, this seems like an oversight that the Board formally would not submit a recommendation for financial disclosure. I mean, Peter, Ben, we talked about this when I was running for office. I told you I was very much in favor of Form 6, but it is not part of the recommendation, it was removed.
No, sir, we discussed it. And we took it off the list because there was a bill filed before the Florida Legislature to require city Commissioners to do that, and we did not want to waste our bandwidth on something that the Legislature was going to require you to do.
Got it. There are several things that I would love to work with you and the Board on moving forward. Let me begin. First of all, due process. Mr. Chairman, your bylaws say that the Ethics Board shall adopt separate due process policies and procedures. Has the Board adopted such due process policies and procedures? And if so, how come we don't have them on the website?
They're our administrative procedures.
Your due process policies and procedures are not on the website. That's the question. Why aren't we just fully compliant?
I don't control the website, I can't answer that.
Excellent. Just a second, please. We're having the conversation. Where are the due process protections prior to an administrative hearing or a filed sworn complaint? Article 10 of the Administrative Hearing Procedures of the Ethics Board bylaws state that the Board shall adopt separate due process policies and procedures for the administration of the Ethics Board in the processing, prosecution, adjudication of the ethics complaint, but where are the due process prior to a formal complaint? There has to be some type of protection. Right now, it is our understanding that the process is 100% subjective, with nothing in writing falling solely on the shoulders of the Ethics Officer, and we need to have a process that is fair but firm for everybody.
That is false.
And so, go ahead, elaborate, please.
We have a 13-page set of administrative procedures that we adopted on the same date. They went through the same process as our bylaws. It was the recommendation of the Board attorney that we take the due process part and put it in a separate document, not mixed up with all of the bylaws related to all of the administrivia that the Board goes through so that, and also because it tended to be more legal, and it would be something probably that people's attorneys would want to see, and was, he argued, and the Board agreed, that it fit in a separate document. So many of the things that you just asked Ms. Meadows-Keeffe about do exist, and they are laid out in our administrative procedures. So for instance.
Not for prior to a, what I believe you're referring, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
For instance, we do not take ethics complaints anonymously. We have had, you said that we've only had one sworn complaint. I believe that's true.
Correct.
We have not always been required to have sworn complaints. That was something that the City Commission adopted in midstream of the Board's existence.
Right.
So complaints that we had prior to that, that we handled as ethics complaints, would not have been sworn because the ordinance did not require.
Therefore, they're not complaints. They're anonymous calls, or they might come and testify before you at a meeting, or it might be an anonymous email, but they're not sworn complaints, which requires the signature, correct?
They were not sworn because there was no requirement that they be sworn.
Correct. Your administrative procedures does address sworn complaints. Your administrative procedures do not address anonymous phone calls that come in.
That's correct.
That is what I'm trying to say.
An anonymous phone call is not a complaint. And our administrative procedures are clear on that point.
Well, seeing how.
That we look at the.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I apologize.
We look at complaints that come in. Under the Charter, the hotline is the responsibility of the Board. So everything that comes into the hotline, under the Charter, the Board must review, and we do. We have in our administrative procedures a process that if a Board member sees an issue, whether it comes in on the hotline or comes in through information that they receive, all the Board members are also citizens of the city of Tallahassee. So we have a process where a Board member can say, I think this may be something that is worth, this is worth a complaint, and a Board member can ask that the Board go into an executive session. The Board member takes the responsibility for putting that issue on there, and if the Board member presents evidence that on its face says that one of the 17 people over whom the Board has jurisdiction has committed a violation of the ethics code, then the Board would move forward with that, self-initiating a complaint, and then we would have a complaint. And at that stage, like on any other complaint, we would give, within 20 days, we would give the respondent notice that they needed to be gearing up for it.
Right. We're going to get to that in a second, about the Board actually initiating the complaint and then being the jury for that complaint in a second. But I want to state for the record, before I move on to the double jeopardy standard, which there is none of, that there is no due process, and I would love to proactively work with the Board and with staff to establish due process when an anonymous phone call complaint comes in before it is an official ethics complaint sworn affidavit. There are no protection against double jeopardy with the State Ethics Commission. Your Administrative Procedure Rule 1.03 Subsection F state that the Board will suspend action if you learn that the same charges have been filed with and/or are being considered by a federal, state, or local law enforcement agency, and the State Ethics Commission, but only until that process has concluded. Does this mean that someone could be found guilty of an ethics violation by the State Ethics Commission, and then again by the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board, or that someone could be acquitted at the State Ethics Commission level, but then still be investigated by the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board? I'm unclear.
I would have to direct that question to the Commission and its staff. That language is parroted out of the city ordinance.
Have y'all considered any protections against double jeopardy? And if not, has, just hasn't come up for discussion?
We don't believe that's.
I'm sorry?
We have had only a brief discussion. I don't believe that the attorney members of the Board believe that's double jeopardy, just like you can rob someone, it can be both a federal and a state crime, and you can be prosecuted for those two things separately.
That is another item that I would like to work on, is double jeopardy clause, and we need to address that as well. When it comes to anonymous complaints and self-initiated complaints, there are no protections for the target of a complaint against one's integrity by an anonymous phone call. The Board allows anonymous complaints via the hotline, in all of which the Ethics Officer investigates, yet the administrative procedures state that all complaints shall be made in writing, executed on a form prescribed by the Board, and signed under oath or affirmation, which is Section 1.03-B-1. Florida Commission on Ethics does not allow anonymous complaints, and I know this is something that the previous Commission has discussed, and this is something that I look forward to discussing at the workshop as well. And so, moving forward, when was the last time that the Ethics Office and procedures of the Ethics Board were audited? I know that we addressed this and brought this up at the previous Commission meeting. Mr. Auditor, do you know when the last time the Ethics Board or, Mr. Chairman, have y'all performed a routine audit on your procedures?
No, sir, we are in our fourth year, and we've been talking about that for a couple of months. We talked in the last month with the City Auditor about using the auditors, the private auditors that they are about to hire to specifically come in and look at the Board, and he agreed that he would give us some idea of the different levels of audit and what those might cost.
I think that's a great idea, and we would support you, I'm assuming, in that function. We audit every aspect of the city on a routine basis, and after five years, I think it's a great idea that we perform the audit. And the question that I want you to bring back to us at the workshop is, would this fall underneath the scope of the external audits? Would not be appropriate for you to conduct the audit, since you fall under the jurisdiction, but would this be something that would fall under the but would this be something that would fall under the scope of the external audit contract that we just brought on board, and how can we assist the Ethics Board to move forward with a complete audit of their office and all of their rules and procedures? Just out here, I say, let's move on to expanded jurisdiction. Why is the Ethics Board seeking expanded jurisdiction?
Both our 2017 recommendations and our 2019 recommendations are an attempt to bring the City Ethics Code in compliance with the City Charter.
So, since January 1, you've averaged about two calls anonymously or communications anonymously. In five years, you've had one formal ethics complaint that comes before you, and that's under the current jurisdiction. Remind us what that jurisdiction is.
Our current jurisdiction covers six items: misuse of position, which covers nine individuals; financial disclosure for elected individuals, so that covers five people; lobbyist disclosure, which covers eight people; disclosure of offers of employment, which covers five people; voting abstention, which covers five people; and gifts, which covers nine people. There are 17 discrete individuals covered by the current code.
And the proposed ordinance change defines public official as a member of the City Commission and commission-appointed aides, mayors, mayors-appointed assistants and aides, city managers, city attorneys, city auditor, city treasurer, clerk, members appointed by the City Commission to serve on advisory, quasi-judicial, and any other board or city, state, or any other regional, local, or corporate entity. Final proposed ordinance, eh, yes. What benefits does the Board see in including citizens who are volunteering their time on the citizens' advisory committees, where it is a non-binding recommendation? Do you think that that'd be a deterrent for us to find good people to volunteer on these citizens' advisory committees, and what was the justification behind it?
Well, in response to that, I would read to you from the City Charter. It says, "The City Commission shall enact an ethics code with jurisdiction over the officers and employees of the City of Tallahassee, whether elected or appointed, paid or unpaid, and over members, officers, and employees of any boards, commissions, or committees thereof." I believe the current ethics code is and has been not in compliance with the City Charter.
I disagree. Well, I don't agree with that statement, but it hasn't taken place in five years? The previous Commission would not entertain the citizens' advisory committees?
I can only tell you our 2017 recommendation, or May of 20, no, excuse me, March of 2017 recommendation, which was adopted in early 2018, we did include language to include boards and commissions as well as city employees broadly. That City Commission chose to adopt the current code, which, in terms of misuse, which would apply to nine people.
When we come to standard of proof, one of your recommendations is to lower the standard of proof from corruptly to known or should have known. You were recommended in 2017 that the language be changed from corruptly to intentionally. The Commission at the time rejected this change because corruptly is the standard used by the Florida Commission on Ethics. Corruptly is defined in Florida statutes, 112.312 Subsection 9. Corruptly means done with the wrongful intent and for the purpose of obtaining or compensating or receiving compensation for any benefit resulting from some act or omission of a public servant which is inconsistent with the proper performance of his or her public duties. With something as important as the ethical behavior of our city's leadership and their integrity on the line, why should we veer from the standard that has long been established by the state and that is clearly defined in state statute?
We base that recommendation on a finding of a statewide grand jury related to Chapter 836, which is criminal misuse of position, where the grand jury said that use of the word corruptly, that used to be the standard in the criminal violation, created prosecutorial problems and made it easier for public officials to get off. The Legislature subsequently did amend out the word corruptly from Chapter 836. I agree with you. The word corruptly is still in the ethics code, but it is not in the equivalent code for criminal prosecution, where they have actually a lower standard. So, when we discussed it, we thought that a lower standard of proof made more sense in ethics world than a higher standard of proof.
But you do not have jurisdiction for criminal prosecution, so that's something that we should work on and continue the conversation on. Disclosure of offers. The requested language is, "Each covered individual shall report to the Ethics Board and the City Attorney any offer made to him or her, anything of value that he or she reasonably believes was made to influence the vote, official action, or judgment of the covered individuals on any matter of city business." If someone's reasonable belief, high enough standard by which to potentially impose someone's character by suggesting that they made an offer they may not have made, what if someone makes a joke that isn't understood the way it was intended? What protections, again, goes back to due process and protections, what protections does the individual have from a character assassination?
We would then kick into our due process, our procedures for due process, where the respondent gets an opportunity to speak, and we would go in, there are a series of legal hurdles that we have to meet before we do anything, and so if it was clearly a joke and that was shown, we would dismiss it, saying that a person simply misunderstood the statement, and that would presumably clear the person.
But there is no recommendations in writing that should be adopted in writing in the bylaws that would provide protections.
No, sir. They're not in our bylaws. They're in our administrative procedures in writing.
I'm, I'm sorry?
They are not in our bylaws. They are in writing in our administrative procedures. As I've already said, we have 13 pages of those that go through exactly what you're talking about.
Correct. That address solely sworn ethics complaints that are signed, not other accusations that are discussed by the Ethics Board before that formal step has been made. When we talk about the solicitation and the acceptance of gifts, the definition that you are providing and would like for us to accept would include a step-great-grandparent being influenced specifically to get to an elected official. I think that we have the opportunity, and we agree, when it comes to immediate family, spouses, kids, brothers, sisters, grandparents, absolutely, as defined in state statute. But I think that we could probably tighten up this recommended definition a little bit, because in my mind, quite honestly, I don't see anybody going after a step-great-grandparent that would qualify under your definition to influence a vote on the City Commission.
Mr. Mayor, that's exactly backwards.
I'm sorry?
Those are the people who are excluded. It is that list of, I believe it's 37 family or close personal relationships who are excluded, so that if you got a gift from a step-great-grandparent, no one could complain about that.
Well, I look forward to working with you on it, because that was not our interpretation or the legal interpretation that we were given. So, that's great. Then we're making headway. When it comes to subpoena authority, why is the Board seeking subpoena authority when the City Charter already requires that, and I quote, "All city management and staff shall cooperate with the ethics officer and make city records available for the conduct of investigations," end quote. Has the Independent Ethics Board had a situation in which they were unable to obtain information relevant to a formal complaint because the city did not comply with this section of the Charter? And I think I speak for all of my colleagues. If we ever do not comply, we will be very upset. Has there ever been a time when we have not complied with the request of information with a formal complaint?
No, sir.
Excellent. The subpoena authority is something.
May I add to that?
Oh, please.
The language we proposed would not just apply to city employees. It would also apply if, for instance, if someone tried to bribe a city employee, and that issue was before us, we would have subpoena power over the person who offered the money or goods.
Oh, I'm very well aware of that recommended action as well. With the Campaign Refund Program, this is kind of separate, but I'm just interested in it. Since its inception, how many $25 refunds have been given back during the Campaign Refund Program? Because that is administered, I guess, by your office.
I don't believe it's more than a couple of dozen.
Right. Actually, for a budget of $30,000, only $790 was sent back during this fiscal year, which includes this election cycle. I think, Commissioner, when we do a full Charter review, that is something that I think that we either need to go full force on, make it successful, or we need to pull it out of the Charter, the refund portion of the independent ethic officer's responsibility. When it comes to the Board's independence, there still remains confusion on the independence of the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board. Section 62 of the Charter, the ECTAS, the Ethics Code established per Section 61, shall provide for the establishment of a citywide ethics office under the exclusive jurisdiction of and reporting to the Independent Ethics Board to discharge the duties and responsibilities of the Ethics Board as provided herein. The ethics office shall include an ethics officer-director, who may be a full-time or a part-time employee, or an independent contractor. The ethics office, which by the way, I think is an interesting model as well, as you're moving forward with Julie's retirement, on whether to hire a new ethics officer, or maybe to consider going out to contract with, say, a law firm through an RFP process that can provide you a full scope of services, probably much less than what we are spending on personnel and benefits. That is something for the Board to actually consider, in my mind, when it comes to the spending and allocation of the taxpayer dollars. The ethics office shall be funded by the City Commission within its discretionary budget authority at a level sufficient to discharge the officer's responsibility. Do you clarify for me, how independent are we? I mean, I see it as, we're just the fiscal agent to you, correct? We pass a budget.
My view?
Yes, sir.
I can only speak for myself. This is not something that the Board has taken a position on, but in my view, the Board is completely dependent on the city.
Right.
Dependent.
Excuse me?
We are completely dependent on the city.
How's that?
You set our jurisdiction. You set our ability to sanction any ethics violation or not be able to sanction.
Right.
And you control our budget. So, if you pass nothing, if you do nothing by ordinance, then we, as a group of volunteers, could meet at someone's house and talk about stuff, and we could do some of the things that the Charter looks for us to do. For instance, make recommendations to the City Commission concerning ordinances or Charter amendments, but we would have no ability to do anything else.
I agree. And if you do so, and that's fine, if you want to meet at someone else's house, just make sure you follow the Sunshine laws and take proper notes and make sure there's room for public comment. But you do bring up a good comment, and that is the fact that the Ethics Board does not necessarily meet in these chambers. You can meet at the Renaissance Center just as easily. You can meet at Smith Williams. You could take your meetings out into the public as much as have them here. And in fact, we have taken great effort to do that over the past couple of months, and I would encourage you to do so as well. If the Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board strives for true and complete independence, then shouldn't we move the ethics officer out of the auditor's office in City Hall, seeing how she has jurisdiction over the auditor's office? Doesn't that kind of create a weird environment when the Independent Ethics Office is physically located in the heart of someone that she has direct oversight over?
That's nothing the Board has discussed, so I don't have an answer for you.
Something to think about as we move forward as well. Finally, have y'all considered an inspector general, or the process of an inspector general?
The only time that the concept of an inspector general has come up before the Board is when we were talking about whistleblower complaints and how the city has no ordinance on whistleblower complaints. We did then talk about who might receive those if we were to make a recommendation on that subject, but the Board has not made such a recommendation. So, the Board has not taken a position, but that's been the only time we've talked about inspectors general.
Mr. Harin, I want to thank you very much for answering my questions. I know at times it sounds like that I am grilling you, and I'm not trying to be adversarial. I share your same concern for passing a strong, firm, yet fair ethics ordinance, and I am committed to doing so. So, I am done with the questions, and I'm going to move forward with some statements. In regards to the inspector general colleagues, as we're taking a deep dive in how we might strengthen the ethics standards here at the city, I would also like to propose that we consider whether an inspector general might be a more appropriate method of addressing some of the issues that have been discussed at the Ethics Board level when they talk about expanded jurisdiction. In many communities, an inspector general is the best practice. The inspector general does have the investigative authority that the auditor's office does not. Isn't that correct, Dennis? And so, I know that this is, well, Mr. Auditor, I know that this is something that your predecessor, Joe Malaschewski, was a strong proponent of, if you don't mind a couple of questions, a strong proponent of creating an inspector general's office within the auditor's office as well. Do you share those same feelings?
Yes, sir.
With this, how does an inspector general's office work if there is a city employee complaint?
Typically, the complaint process would be received and evaluated through a formal process that would be established as part of the establishment of an inspector general's office.
Wonderful. When we have the workshop, I do look forward to hearing more about how an inspector general's role plays within the city government.
Yes, sir.
To create a fair but firm process. Also provides the protections, but the investigative power within the City of Tallahassee with all of the employees outside of the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board itself. Of course. Mr. Auditor, will you identify yourself, name and title here?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'm Dennis Sutton, the City Auditor for City Tallahassee.
Great. Thanks. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
And so, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and close out. We still have.
Mr. Mayor, I've got more comments on. Sure. Respond to your comments.
Hold on. Let me finish up, and I'll come back to you. But we've had a great conversation. I actually left, believe it or not, about 40% of my questions on the table. We'll save them for later. I know it's getting a little late. This has been a robust conversation. You have expressed some concerns. We have expressed some concerns with the process currently in place, and we appreciate all the recommendations that the Board has sent to us for consideration. And I think we're doing our job. I mean, these are the tough, detailed questions that you want us to do. You want us to dig in so that we can create policy to be able to move forward and to do it right. I do have concerns with the role of the ethics officer and how that role has played out. One of the things that I am really interested in learning more about is, what does an average day in the ethics office look like? When we collect two complaints a month, and I know you do training, I need you to refresh my memory later, on what is the role of the ethics officer and how can we move forward in a positive manner? Or is it time to look at other entities, for instance, an RFP process for the full services of a law firm to be able to come in and to support the Ethics Board in its entirety, to be able to move forward as well? I have grave concerns on how anonymous complaints are handled and that the Ethics Board accepts anonymous complaints contrary to what the state allows, that the Ethics Board opinion that it can act as both the prosecutor and the jury, which we didn't even cover, but the fact that a member of the Ethics Board can elevate, use your terms at the meeting the other night, a anonymous complaint into a full sworn complaint, and then serve, even though they will recuse themselves individually, the Board then turns around and serves as the administration of justice on that particular complaint itself. That is something as well that we need to address. Very concerned with the lack of due process, the bedrock principle of our judicial system, prior to a formal complaint being filed, which seems to be 99% of the work of the Ethics Board. In five years, there's been one sworn complaint, so everything for the past five years, outside of that one complaint, has been anonymous calls and emails. We have to have a process in place that is fair, that is firm, that helps move the agenda forward of the Ethics Board, but also provides the protections. I am concerned with the lack of double jeopardy. I am concerned with the request for expanded jurisdiction without more information. I am concerned about the desire to abandon the statuary-defined standard of proof. I want to continue the conversation about subpoena authority. I looked forward and had a great conversation this afternoon regarding the Ethics Board's budget and moving forward and how we can support the Ethics Board appropriately. I do share with you and want to continue the conversation about the independence, or as you perceive, the lack thereof, from the City of Tallahassee, because I actually think we share a lot of those concerns as well. And so, the bottom line is, is that we take this extremely And so the bottom line is, is that we take this extremely seriously. As you could tell, I have dug in. I'm doing my homework, I'm working. I had a great meeting with Mr. Payne this afternoon, a member of the ethics board as well, and I appreciate your time. It's the second meeting we've had. I appreciate your time. We are going to do our job, we're going to dig in, we are going to work with you, and I believe that we are going to pass a very fair and firm ethics package, as promised, by the end of the year. Concludes my comments, and colleagues, this is the most I have ever spoken on one issue. I appreciate your patience with me. I wanted to get this on the record, but this is also one of the most important issues that we will deal with all year. Again, I have no recommendations tonight, but I wanted to get answers to the questions. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized.
Great, thank you. And, you know, I think as we're all aware, this is a decision to be made by this board. I don't think we're here to debate with the ethics board whether we agree with them or not, we're here to debate with each other whether we'd agree on certain items. So you made a lot of points in your statement, and it's hard to take them one at a time, but I just want to, first and foremost, like, we got here by a ballot initiative. 60%, 67% of voters wanted an ethics board. The power, the innate power of our city lies in its citizens and its people. Mr. Chair, I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind. And then, we talked about anonymous complaints and anonymous notes. Personally, I don't care if it's a tweet, I don't care if it slipped to me in an envelope, I don't care if it gets called to the ethics office, I don't care if it's smoke signals, I don't care if it's Dr. Jackson at the podium saying something's wrong, we have the duty to look into it, whether it's sworn or not. We have to be able to protect people's anonymity, we have to be able to protect whistleblowers if there's something wrong, we want to know about it. There should be a process, and I understand it's embarrassing. It can be embarrassing to get accused of something that you don't think is wrongdoing, and we see that at every level of government. There's speculation at every level of government, but that shouldn't stop us from taking every complaint seriously. If a citizen sees something and wants a response, they want to see our ethics board respond. I don't think people are critical of the ethics board because they want to see less of it, they want to see it do more, they want to see it stand up, have some power to say, if we saw wrongdoing, yes, we investigate it, and they want to be able to trust the opinion that came out of it, and I think in a lot of recent cases, nothing came of it, and they should trust the ethics board. We mentioned the jurisdiction of the board and the complaints that have come forward. You're also recommending we expand the jurisdiction, so with that expanded jurisdiction, would you be able to address more of the complaints that have been received?
We believe, and we spent a long time talking about this, so we started with, as has been pointed out, we took almost a year, now some of that was a delay because we experienced huge turnover in the board over a three or four-month period, and we kept going back and retracing our steps so that the new board members would be fully cognizant of what we were doing, and making sure that when we voted unanimously on our recommendations, that everybody truly understood and had a hand in those recommendations. But we, the general discussion of the board was that one of the reasons we get, there are two reasons we get very few complaints. One is that the jurisdiction is very narrow. The only item on which we're liable to get a complaint, really, that looks like ethics is on misuse of position. And as I said, the current ordinance for misuse of position applies to nine people, eight people sitting up there and one person sitting over here in the front row.
Ten, including the ethics officer.
She's not--
But she reports to you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm having a question or--
Absolutely.
The ethics ordinance does not apply to the ethics officer. We have, the way we have drafted it, it would, because as a city employee, in our recommendations in 2017 and 2019, both she and the members of the board would fall under the jurisdiction of the ethics board and be subject to ethics complaints. But we talked about, at great length, the number of people to whom the ethics code would apply, and also the range or the discreteness of the activities. So for instance, someone who is offered, effectively offered a bribe and does not take it, that would not be misuse of position, it would not fall within our jurisdiction. Under our proposal, it would fall under our jurisdiction to be able to at least attempt to act on that. Now, the person who offered the bribe might be outside our jurisdiction, and therefore we might not be able to do anything, but it would at least create a forum for those kinds of situations. So we spent a bunch of time talking about who might file sworn complaints, and on what topics they might file sworn complaints, and trying to make sure that where people had things that most of us generally understand within ethics, and we spent a lot of time looking at both the state ethics code as well as other county and city ethics codes to see what was generally understood to be in them. We thought that having a range of those types of activities fall within the city of Tallahassee ethics code would be familiar with people, to people, and that certainly there are a lot of things, like a bribe is a crime, so that could go straight to the state attorney, and I'm not saying that our board would necessarily even want to deal with that, we might immediately refer it to law enforcement. But for things that fall short of crimes, that people generally think of, I think, ethics violations as something short of a criminal act, that we wanted to have a fairly broad view of what types of activities those were, so that people weren't put off by having to say, well, my boss just asked me to do something, and I don't think it's right, I think it's unethical, but can I shoehorn that request into the specific ordinance that's in place now, or is there enough in the city ethics ordinance that I can just complain about it and let the ethics board figure out whether or not it fits within a somewhat broader ordinance?
Gotcha, okay. You also mentioned the Charter stating who should be overseen by the ethics board. Whose responsibility is it to ensure that our ordinance is, comply with that Charter?
Well, again, the Charter is very specific in terms of the board's responsibility. It says, "The board shall recommend proposed ordinances, resolutions, or charter amendments. Such legislative proposals shall be filed with and considered by the City Commission." So in my view, and you will find that the board, we submitted our recommendations five months ago, you have not heard a peep from us about the City Commission following up on those recommendations. And this is my personal view and not the view of the board, although I have expressed it a couple of times in board meetings, once we file our recommendations, our job is done. Now it is up to you to pass whatever ethics ordinance you feel is appropriate for the city of Tallahassee.
Okay, thank you. And has the ethics board ever made an accusation or adjudicated guilt based on solely an anonymous phone call?
No.
Thank you. And I think you were in the room the last time corruptly and intentionally were discussed, and this is just true or false, did Commissioner Maddox make an impassioned plea to keep the corrupt standard?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
I don't think Commissioner Maddox is--
He's not here now.
--serving. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, just one question. What do you all see as the role of the city manager in addressing complaints among city staff? Everybody seems to have ignored the role of the city manager in addressing complaints against his employee or her employees.
I think the city manager is, to repeat an off-used phrase, the man in that aspect. Certainly, as it relates to whistleblower complaints, the statute says that in a city that has not adopted a whistleblower ordinance, whistleblower protections can only be offered on complaints made to the chief executive official or other appropriate official. But since the term "other appropriate official" isn't defined, if somebody came in, for instance, to your HR manager and said, "I want to make a whistleblower complaint to you, can you give me whistleblower protection?", I believe, and your city attorney would have to answer this, that that other city employee would have to go, "I don't know, I don't know if I'm an appropriate official under the state law." So certainly the only person for whom, in the city, to whom you can make a whistleblower complaint and get whistleblower protection, for certain, is the city manager. So I think his role is beyond critical.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one final question, because I want to dispense with this one way or the other. When the ethics ordinance was passed, did it have then-Commissioner Scott Maddox in mind? Or was this something that the citizens, I know I voted on it and why I voted for it, but was that something then that the citizens of this community wanted for our city government? And it didn't have Scott Maddox in mind when it passed this ethics ordinance?
You're talking about our current ethics ordinance on misuse of position?
Yes, yes.
There was nothing in there, as far as I know, that had Commissioner Maddox in mind. I can tell you, our original language that we submitted in the legal memorandum that followed up did not include the word corrupt.
Okay, but it seems like every time we have a discussion about this, it somehow comes back around to Scott Maddox. And my point is, this was not predicated on anything that Commissioner Maddox, then-Commissioner Maddox, had done at the time. This was something that the citizens of this community decided that it wanted to see passed.
At the time, well, the recommendation came from the board in March of 2017. At that point, we had no idea--
Right.
--where all of the other criminal stuff was going, so, no, it was not from the board's perspective, and I don't believe from the perspective of any of the mayor or any of the other commissioners would have been influenced at all by Commissioner Maddox's predicament.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
My question is, for those anonymous calls that are outside of your jurisdiction, what happens to those calls? Where do they go?
Well, the Charter, again, says that we will operate a hotline that is to receive a wide variety of complaints, and it lists all of the things that can be complained about. And what the Charter then talks about us referring them on to the appropriate official. So I know we have had one or more that we have referred to the city manager, or to another manager in the city when they relate to the action of some city employee who's not one of the 17 people covered by the ethics ordinance. We have referred matters to the state attorney, to the sheriff, to the police chief, to an appropriate official, when it's not an ethics matter, but it is something that appears to be something that some person in authority probably ought to deal with, and we've had a fair number of those kinds of calls.
So you determine whether there's legality, whether it needs to go to the city manager or go to the sheriff, or go to the, you all make that determination?
Yes, ma'am. Typically, we are not making a determination that anything wrong happened. What we're doing is looking at the complaint and saying, does this allege, if this alleges a crime, then it needs to go to someone in law enforcement. If this alleges an HR problem, then we're going to send it to the city manager.
Okay.
And we are not doing an investigation, we're not determining guilt or innocence, we're not saying that anybody did anything wrong, we're just saying, we got this complaint, and under the Charter, we have a responsibility to refer complaints outside of ethics world on to the appropriate person.
Does the county have a comparable board?
No, ma'am.
Nope. Okay. It just, to me, it's just very interesting on all aspects, that the city seems that we have more people to deal with, we have more budget to deal with, the county just seems to just be skating along, nobody's concerned about what's going on over there. I hate to say that, that's not a question, to me, it's just an observation, and I'm not throwing the county under the bus, I'm just saying, we have one city in a county.
I have been informed that they've been having some very serious discussions along those lines in the last few months, but I can't tell you any of the details.
Okay.
Dr. Bryan.
I have--
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I am, I voted for this, and I'm astonished tonight to hear that you're not independent, that you're dependent on the city for housing, or payments, for, you know, accounting, lots of things. You can't be independent if you are dependent. And so I'm just not sure how we got here. I'm sure, I know that's not what I voted for, and I bet that's not what citizens voted for, because if there's someone that's controlling your budget, someone who controls where your office is, controls whether, you know, your meeting space and what have you, you're dependent, and sometimes it looks like you may be biting the hand that feeds you, because, you know, you're having to do this, but it could have impact on where you are. What do you all resolve to do about that?
Well, I do want, as I said, I think we're dependent on the city for budget, for the sanctions that we can issue, and for the breadth of our ethics jurisdiction. On the first two of those, I want to give great props to the city. You have given us an adequate budget, and I'll explain what I mean by adequate, if I may, in a second, and you have given us a set of possible sanctions that is a pretty good list. We think it can be improved, but that's our experience over time. In terms of the budget, and I'm sure that this is a discussion that will come up, we have reverted money at the end of every year, and we've had some discussion of that in the board, and one reason, there are, I'm an old budget guy, I worked for, in the appropriations process in the legislature for 16 years, and then around the appropriations process for another 140 years approximately.
Feels like it either way, huh?
My knees feel like it. We have had several members express the view that they like us being able to revert money, because if we ever did have three or four serious ethics complaints, where we had to go into executive session, where we had to hire a separate attorney as a prosecutor, basically, the way that the state ethics commission does, where we had to have court reporters in the room for all of our proceedings, where then everything that we did was going to go to the circuit court on appeal, so we had to build a very detailed record, and I think our procedures provide for all of that, that that kind of stuff, for any individual complaint, could eat through a lot of money very quickly, and it could, if we didn't have extra money, it could put us in the odd position, while we, particularly with nine, that we could be back in the position of saying, we don't have enough money to handle this ethics complaint against one of you, won't you please give us some more money this year? So we have, we have had some members who, of the board, who think that us reverting money is a good idea. I think there are other members of the board who would say, you know, put us on a shoestring, and when we come back with an ethics complaint that we can't pursue, we'll come ask for the money. Either way, I don't have any reason to believe that the city would not support us financially. So that's my very long-winded answer to your softball question.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bryan.
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for coming here tonight and sharing with us data, facts. It's obvious that there are many questions and many points of discussion, really, and I'm seriously looking forward to our workshop, so that we can at least all be on the same page and understand where we are.
Right.
And then strategically develop something for us to move forward. So thank you so much.
Well, and I think for the board, I would say you are very welcome, and we are very cognizant of the fact that no one expects you to rubber stamp our recommendations. The last time we made recommendations in 2017, the then-mayor and commission, I would say subtracted a little bit and added a lot, they came out with some things that we had not thought of, which is great. That's your job, we're not trying to do your job. Our job is simply make recommendations where we see topics that we think, where we think recommendations are valid. In my view, under the Charter, that's where our job ends.
Mr. Mayor, if I can say one final thing.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I appreciate the fact that you're not forcing us to do, to accept everything, but we're receiving quite a bit of pressure. Folks are writing op-eds, folks are telling us to do our job, and Lord knows, we are trying to do our job. So I appreciate you saying that, and I hope they're hearing you, that the board is allowing us an opportunity to do our jobs. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. I will make myself available to you, if you'd like to get together between now and the workshop as well, work on some of these issues. Commissioner Matlow makes a motion for staff recommendation.
He's got the report, yep.
Yeah. Seconded by the Mayor Protam. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 13.02, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite Michael Parker forward regarding this item. It seeks your approval to commit $1.3 million to support two applications for low-income housing tax credits for the redevelopment of the Orange Avenue Apartments development. If successful-- If successful, it would leverage over $22 million in public and private financing to construct affordable housing. As you know, the redevelopment of Orange Avenue Public Housing is a critical component of the partnership with Purpose Built Communities, and we had a great announcement yesterday that Tallahassee has been selected, and this item certainly supports that. Michael Parker is here to answer questions, and I would also like to recognize Ray Canansky, Ray Canansky, I think I've got that right, Ray, with Columbia Residential, he's here tonight as well.
Excellent.
We'd certainly entertain a motion if you'd like more information or have questions.
I'd move staff recommendations.
Just a second, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Anybody here from the general public that'd like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, Mayor Pro Temp makes motion in favor of staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. No further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. 13.03, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Renetta Marshall, our general manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure, she's coming forward. She has a short presentation, I'll set this issue up.
Operative, short.
Short, it'll be short, very confident in that. As you know, we've received a lot of feedback regarding excessive speeds in some of our neighborhoods. This is a very contemporary topic. In fact, it came up at your last blueprint, or governmental meeting in our Colarne neighborhood. The traffic calming program can be a tool to address some of these issues, and while it can be effective, the current program is very limiting. That's been in place for a number of years. We've been reviewing our current policy, and this item recommends a number of changes to open up the program to more neighborhoods. And I'm going to turn it over to Renetta, just to give us, just a little more overview on that, and seek your approval to update the policy.
Excellent.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm here to give you a very brief overview about the traffic calming program. It is my pleasure to present our recommendations for your consideration. The last time that the traffic calming program, and then the related city commission policy were updated, was in 2004, 1997 respectively, so it's been a while. Just very briefly, a little about what traffic, the purpose of traffic calming, it is to promote safe conditions for everyone that's using residential roads, whether they be motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians, or the residents.
And even scooters?
Pardon me?
And even scooters?
And yes, yes, Commissioner, even scooters. It's to reduce collision frequency and the severity thereof, and it's to reduce vehicular speeds and volume on these roads. And in doing so, ultimately, you will reduce the need for police enforcement. To give you just a little bit of information about the effectiveness of the traffic calming, these are a few streets that traffic calming has been implemented in, in the city. Go from 2004 all the way to 2018, and you can read the slides there, as far as what the speeds were before and after, and you can see that they were reduced significantly, in some cases, all the way up to 32% reduction. So, that just gives data on the effectiveness of traffic calming. So, this is where the rubber hits the road, if you will. These are the proposed, uh-oh. These are the proposed major revisions. In our current program, only local streets are considered. In the proposed, we are recommending that both local streets, as well as minor collectors, be considered. In the current program, for volume for local streets, it has to be greater than 400 vehicles per day. In our proposal, we're reducing that number to 150 vehicles per day, and also for minor collectors, the minimum is 5,000 vehicles per day, not going over that. Cost sharing. In the current program, cost sharing is required if the amount goes over 32,000 per mile. In what we are proposing, there is no cost sharing provision, so therefore, that those that maybe afford to pay aren't getting traffic calming versus those that cannot. For neighborhood voting, currently, it's 75% approval, and we are recommending that that be reduced to 67% approval. And also, as important, the types of traffic calming, what folks are used to are the speed humps, and we're opening that up, so it would be speed humps, as well as other type of traffic calming devices that are listed there. And showing those different type of traffic calming devices that currently exist within the city, there's an example on the left, that's a chicane, which is basically a serpentine type of curve, that's in Oakland Avenue, that's in the Myers Park neighborhood. On the right is a traffic circle, Colonial Drive, that's in the Midtown neighborhood. A splitter island, that's on Wood Gateway, which is in the Woodgate neighborhood. On the right, splitter island with a speed hump, South Meridian Street, and that is in the South City neighborhood. And then, of course, your traditional speed hump, that's on Garden View Drive, which happens to be in the Colarne neighborhood. And as the city manager mentioned, we have met with the Colarne neighborhood, following the blueprint IA meeting, that was on September 5th, we reached out, had a meeting with the president and the vice president of the homeowners association. We believe that that meeting was very productive, and they provided a list of issues that they perceived to be issues within the neighborhood. This map just gives a brief overview of what some of the issues were. Those roads that are shown in red, those are the ones that were identified to staff as having speeding issues. The ones that are shown in yellow were those where there was cut through traffic, if you will. So, those were just some of those. The proposals for the traffic calming may be able to address some of the issues there, certainly not all of them, but there's a connection there. And what we're going to do as we proceed going forth, we are going to meet with the neighborhood on a monthly basis to make sure that communication stays open. So, there's no action for the commission on that, that is just an update. What we are asking for action is to approve the updated traffic calming program procedure, and to also approve the related updates that would go along with the city commission policy 602. And as the city manager mentioned, by approving these changes, it will open up for more streets to become eligible for traffic calming. And I'll be glad to take any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions? Commissioner Williams-Cox and Commissioner Matt Loeb.
Not a question, but I just wanted to say thank you. I received a call from Ms. Eva Manning, everybody knows Ms. Manning, and she did her traffic count, she had all that done, and, you know, and she didn't make the grade, I'll be happy to report when this passes tonight, that her neighborhood can now qualify, because what's happening in her neighborhood, she's in the Famcy, on Famcy Street, and Gore Avenue is over there, so Gore is, Gore has the speed bumps, so what people are doing is circumventing Gore and speeding through her street. And so, there was some concern, so thank you for, you all taking a look at this and getting the ball rolling. Be happy to let her know that she was the catalyst for this. At 90-plus years old, she's still involved in her community.
Commissioner Matt Loeb.
Yeah, same sentiment, thank you for your work. I think this is going to tee us up for some lively community conversations, but, you know, we're ready for them, but I think it is time. There's a lot of concern out there, and this will help address it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
We have two speakers, I believe?
Yes, sir. Mayor, on the traffic calming, we have Adam Anthony Biblo and Philip Blakelk.
Mr. Biblo, good to see you. Thanks for joining us, your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, very good evening to you. Thank you for taking the time to work on this. Adam Anthony Biblo, 1316 Lehigh Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. Thank you.
Hey, neighbor.
Congratulations on your election. Thank you. First, I want to congratulate staff, Ms. Marshall and Mr. Schaefer, and Mr. Seagraves and other staff, they've done a great job on this. I'm going to give it A-, I strongly endorse it, I want you to put it in place, it expands the scope of traffic calming to, as they mentioned, to go beyond local streets, a little bit bigger streets, minor collector streets, excellent idea. And most importantly, it expands the way you can calm traffic to go beyond just the speed humps that some people don't like, and use some other design techniques. In the past, the city of Tallahassee has been a leader on this. The Federal Highway Administration, the cover, the booklet on traffic calming, Tallahassee, I believe it was Colonial Drive, the picture of the traffic calming there adorned the cover of the guidebook that FHWA used nationwide. That was back in the day, as they say. So, congratulations to staff on that. A couple things that I think need to be looked at a little further, the first time I had a chance to look at the changes were a couple days ago, when the agenda item was posted, there is a provision in there for 85th percentile speed measured on a minor collector, if that speed, if 85%, if, we'll put it this way, 15% of the drivers or more are going more than 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, then that minor collector is eligible for traffic calming. I think that 10 miles per hour over the speed limit is too much, should be the same criterion as used for the local street, five miles an hour over the speed limit, perhaps six or seven miles. When you get hit by that car, it doesn't know what kind of street you're on, and in this case, you're talking about an even faster speed on minor collectors. So, please look at that. There's a question on the term "impact area," which are some of the other streets, you mentioned Gore and Famcy. Impact area looks at, well, if we're going to change something on one street, what's the impact on the, you know, other streets? For the minor collectors, the impact area may be too small. Couple things, the way it's proposed, couple other things, think about funding going forward. Next one, very important, you need to publicize this program, so that neighborhoods know that it's available. I don't know how you're going to publicize it. Police department has to respond to a lot of speeding, maybe they won't need to respond as much, I don't think they will, maybe they can help inform, maybe your PIO office can help push out this information. Two last things, think about every time you do traffic calming project, to have some sort of post-project evaluation, did it work well, how can you improve it? Then the same thing for the larger program, how can you, you know, every year or two, how can you improve the program?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you, appreciate you coming out. Mr. Clerk, next speaker.
Next speaker is Philip Blakelk.
Philip, thanks for joining us. Appreciate you sticking around. Your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
Thank you. Philip Blakelk, 1526 Chowkeben Nini, Indian Head Acres, live close to Adam, very honored to be here. The reason that I am here today is, well, Chowkeben Nini. I've had the pleasure of living in Indian Head for a good five, almost six years now, it's where I met my wife. I'm now the proud father of an adopted 16-year-old son and a two-year-old boy. We live on Chowkeben Nini, and before I got married, Chowkeben Nini was quite the topic of conversation on our neighborhood boards, because even with the posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour, it, people tended to drive really, really fast on it, despite the posted speed limit signs. Four years ago, under the existing traffic calming program, there was, Chowkeben did meet the criteria for traffic calming, however, we didn't get the critical mass of support because we were limited to just speed humps. Those are very controversial, not a whole lot of us like them. I'm a practicing traffic engineer, I work for Florida Department of Transportation, and I know that a speed limit sign in and itself is not sufficient to tell people to go slow. If you have a big, wide, straight road, driver expectation dictates that people will psychologically want to go faster. None of us in Indian Head want our little toddlers running out into the road due to fast drivers, and there are numerous options that could be done, which have been discussed, and Adam has done a great job supporting this effort for us as well, speed humps, small little traffic circles, curb extensions, all kinds of things to affect the psychology of the road and keep drivers glued to the fact that, yes, this is a residential street. And I can guarantee you that along Chowkeben, there will be much more critical mass and support for these common sense features, and I have the documentation here to prove it. This is my son, Henry, he's two years old, and we have, in our neighborhood, have put these little signs out, just advising drivers to adhere to the 25 a mile an hour speed limit. It's a small start, and we really hope that you will vote for this measure. I have a letter here that many, many residents along Chowkeben Nini and nearby in the neighborhood have signed in support of traffic calming besides speed humps. And if you would, I would be honored to present this to you.
Great, thank you. Absolutely. I'll take that on this end, and that way we'll have it for the record.
To the clerk, that'd be great. Hey, thanks for coming out, we appreciate you sticking around. I have a Henry as well. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
We do not.
Commissioners, any conversation?
Move acceptance.
Staff recommendations been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp, seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We are on item number 13.04.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In June, you directed staff to initiate a three-month pilot program to evaluate an e-scooter share program. That pilot's been in place now for just over two months, and we've had more than 60,000 rides on the scooters in our community. This item recommends extending the program an additional six months to allow potential integration of shared bicycles and other micro-mobility options. We think those hold promise throughout our community, and we believe the scooters could be a gateway to that. Julie Christensen, who's been instrumental in this endeavor, certainly taken a lot of effort on her part and other parts, she's here to answer any questions, if you have them.
Excellent. Any questions before we go to public comment? How many speakers do we have on this item?
We have, I believe I just have two speakers on this item, Mayor.
Sounds great, let's begin.
First speaker's Mike Goldstein.
Mr. Goldstein, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
All right, so, Mike Goldstein, 217 West Second Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida, 303, I believe. First, before that gets started, to reiterate our comments, we're still here, thanks for hanging out with us for now. I'm not against the scooter program that we, I'm happy you guys tabled it for as long as you did, because I want to appreciate you guys for your hard work and just putting it off as long as you could possibly put it off, because I know it was a hard process, you know, and just really think it through and get through the June start for the pilot. So, thanks for that, just to start off saying thank you for doing that process. That being said, it's a lot to deal with, with these scooters around town, you all know what I do, I'm not going to go into that right now, but the numbers, I'm sure Julie has the numbers of the ridership, and that's awesome with the five companies that started here, with the numbers and the tribulation you've been through with the campuses and the college town and all that. And downtown's great, with everything that's lined up the way it is. My issue is with the passengers that can use them wrongly, is what I'm trying to bring up tonight, and that's what my concern is, the safety aspect. We started this program during football season, which is a mess in itself without scooters involved. Then we're going to extend it through March or April, what's the, what would the extension be to? March, okay. So, now we have family weekend this weekend with football coming in, so that's a big thing as well. And then, through March, we have session in January. I know, John, you know about that, a few of you guys know about sessions, so the kids are fine, but then, when you get the legislators and the lobbyists involved, scooters at night at Clydes, that could be a little issue as well. I've seen things that numbers don't show you, because I'm out in the heat of it with seeing what the numbers with these rides, I see the rides themselves, not just the numbers. So, my thing is, when these girls say they'll take a scooter because it's cheaper than Uber to go home, and they're ready to be more than they should be, that's one thing. When they're hitting themselves at Clydes, and too embarrassed to report the injury to the hotline, or TOCs making a bank off of that for sure, that's another thing with they're embarrassed to report their injuries. That's why they're not being shown right now, guys, that's not, that's why these injuries are not being recorded, because they're embarrassed they got hurt on scooters. Any of you guys use Snapchat? Any of the folks up on the DS use Snapchat? Thank God you don't, because if you did, you would see the initial of these kids in college town before they got kicked out of there. Their injuries, and they're proud that they got wiped out on their little snaps, so I'm sure if they have stories, they could bring them back up and show you, but those are factors. And then, when these scooters die, these kids are walking home at night, and so the batteries die, so that's the thing, it's like, that's the issues I'm trying to bring up, I know a lot of time, but I just wanted to show you guys the other side of the equation that maybe you didn't consider before extending this program, because there are factors at play that are more than just a, if it was used right, like a tourism or a alternative transportation like it should be, which most of it is, that would be great, and I'd love to keep that going, but there are things that maybe... But there are things that maybe you don't see at night that might affect the decision that's about to be made tonight. So I just want to get that out there.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you sticking around.
Also, Erwin Jackson on this item.
Dr. Jackson, did you ride a scooter down here today, Dr. Jackson?
No, I didn't.
Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Some of you know I'm a landlord. Every day I worry about someone suing me. Goes with territory. I carry a large liability policy because folks do stupid things sometime. I'm opposed to the e-scooters because I honestly, honestly believe and evidence will show that individuals, males, females, students, young, old, will get injured and some will die on that scooter. That's one problem. I'm not dying, I'm not getting on anything. The second problem that I have a concern is, and why I oppose this, is because every once a week at least, I'll have students or young people, I don't know who they are, they drive up to get close to FSU. FSU does not allow these things on campus. They know it'd be a disaster. All the people walking, all the scooters together, so they outlaw them. So the students then drive these scooters as close as they can get to the campus, throw them on the sidewalk, and I've had probably a half a dozen that was thrown on my property in my parking lot. So I call the insurance company and say, hey, am I responsible if this happens? You know, if someone trips over this thing or they fall over it, or if they back up their car and they smash it and they smash their car, I'm going to get sued. They said, yep, that's your liability. That's your responsibility. Any trash in your parking lot, you're supposed to have it cleaned up. Well, I tell you what. So my only solution then, based on that, I said, I'll call the city. Maybe the city has a policy where if this scooter they've approved is on my property and someone gets injured, then the city's going to cover my liability. Guess what? They said no. Now, the only way that I can take care of this problem is I go over, grab the scooter, and I throw them in the garbage dump. The big 10 things. So I've thrown three away and one today. Now, I'm going to continue to do that. There's only 500 and I've gotten rid of three. But it's not, it's really not a laughing matter because the problem is, how much liability are we looking at? We had a city commissioner, Gil Ziffer, his wife tripped on a sidewalk and you guys paid him $100,000 or $150,000. How much are you going to have to pay when someone gets ran over on one of these scooters? It's going to be a serious problem. I've got a couple suggestions. One, we need to make sure, I would ask you to vote against this. It's a disaster. Number one, I would ask you to go ahead and let's look at the amount of liability. These companies at a minimum should have a $2 to $5 million policy, liability, to cover individuals where there's injuries, for the property owners, for the individuals to cover that. One, now if you're terribly injured or die, you know, the insurance won't help, but, and then secondly, if you take property arrived from here to there, there needs to be specified places where you leave these things. Right now, if it's on a sidewalk, someone who's handicapped, it's going to be an expensive proposition. So please get rid of it. And if you don't, they ought to have a significant liability policy and a place to drop them off, other than my apartment complex.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Appreciate it. Anybody else here from the general public that'd like to speak on this issue? Any none? We'll turn it to Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
I have a question. In the staff recommendation, it says that staff recommends extending the pilot for an additional six-month period until March 15 with the same five vendors and allow vendors to deploy up to 50 units. Now, if I'm not mistaken there, we're not at five vendors currently. What are we going to do about the fifth vendor?
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. Actually, Julie was going to add that and I did not ask her to share it. Gacha was one of the original five vendors. They notified us yesterday officially that they do not intend to re-enter the market. You have discretion, we can move forward with four. We believe four is adequate to do the piloting. If you would like to fill that fifth one in, that's certainly up to you. If you did so, I would recommend that they pay the entrance fee and the requisite effort that the original five went through.
Have we heard from anyone who's interested?
I understand that we have. I have not directly. I understand there have been a couple companies that have expressed interest. One that was in the original pool of consideration. If you require, there were 10 or 12 companies that applied for the pilot. You selected five. I understand one of them does wish to be in the pilot. And then another one that I'm unfamiliar with that was not originally in that group.
Okay. I received some information today about one that might be a scooter for adults that has a seat attached to it. So I don't know if you call it a scooter or a bike or scooter bike or what you call it. And it has wheels that are bigger. This morning, someone mentioned about the front wheels on the scooters being larger so if you encounter rocks, it didn't throw you and that kind of thing. So I, you know, I don't know what the appetite is for opening it back up to allow additional folks in. But if we started out saying we wanted at least five, one is dropped off. It might warrant us so that we have a good pilot, like we originally said to, that we open it up and allow another one to join this pool.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you must have read my mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Those are private thoughts.
Because I did have a motion in mind and that was to, I didn't know.
Excuse me, before you go forward with your motion, if you wouldn't mind if I could make one comment?
Yes.
Just if you're considering bringing in someone else, I would recommend that you stick with one of the folks who've responded to the RFI because you want to make sure you're judging people by the same criteria. So if there's someone else that you want to add, the best practice would be to go with one of the ones that responded and has been evaluated by the criteria that you had established and approved.
Okay, hold on, but on point. If we are expanding the scope of the pilot to include other micro-mobility, including bike share, how does that fit into the original RFI, which was simply scooters?
Right. Well, that's just a decision by you to add something on to the contract so you'd have to actually do a new contract that would include that. But, you know, maybe the city manager could speak to that, but my thought is that it's separate and apart from the scooter. It's just like an add-on.
Okay, because from what Commissioner Williams-Cox is talking about, it doesn't sound like the scooter in the traditional sense of what was the original RFI that went out. And so what I'm hearing is, is that you would like for this company to be able to compete. Therefore, let's just make sure that the motion reflects and, but, do you see what I'm trying to do?
Right. And unless this company, unless this company was a part of the original responders to the RFI, I would not recommend that you bring them in at this time. Now, obviously, I don't think you want to redo your entire RFI process. So in order to make sure you have people in who have already gone through the process of review, judged by the same standards, then you could bring them in because they've been evaluated. So you could give direction to bring someone in who was on the original list, who's gone through the same review process.
Okay, so somebody that was on the original list, we're just going to plug them in?
If that's your will.
And for a point of clarification, I was just mentioning that I had received something regarding someone else. I never even mentioned the company's name. So if, my point is, we need to arrive at a, I think we should arrive at a fifth vendor by whatever means is legal or best practices.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and then Commissioner Maddox.
Yeah, my intent was.
Matlow. Matlow.
I see what you did there.
I'm tired. With all the effort, I'm tired.
It's late, it's late, y'all.
Jeremy, Jeremy.
That's good.
Commissioner Matlow, I apologize.
But Madam Attorney, that was exactly my intent. And because it is late, I will go ahead and put a motion on the floor and let you all consider it. My motion would be, and I agree that I think we should continue with five. I'm just learning now that Gacha has pulled out. I had heard that they were, had not participated fully and were still trying to determine if they were going to go forward and it just didn't make sense to continue with them because they haven't participated fully. And now I'm hearing that they're out completely. And so my motion then is to include Blue Duck, which is one of the other five companies that was considered in the original RFI, to include them in the pilot extension.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, thank you. And just for clarification from staff, I think when we originally put this out, 12, there were 12 responses?
There were 11.
There were 11. And the recommendation, I think, there were three that were recommended and then two that were kind of approved and then the other for various reasons of what they offered. I think with so many other vendors out there with six, I wouldn't feel comfortable picking an individual one today, but let's just take that one spot, put it back out for RFP, for someone to be able to get in through a competitive process. We don't have to pick on the spot. You know, they can find it out, come back with a recommendation and they can get added to the pilot. And I'll make that a motion.
Say that again. You just made a motion to send out that last spot?
The last spot to RFP.
You want to go to RFP?
RFI, RFI.
You want to go to RFI or do you want to look at the original?
I would say just send it out to RFI. You know, any company wants to look at it, you know, we'd accept on application.
Any company or, I'm sorry, Jer.
Completely open, completely. I wouldn't limit it to anybody.
Okay, so going out to RFI, brand new, with the same parameters previously, but for this last scooter. Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion for discussion.
Okay, motion's been seconded. I got Commissioner Bryant first and then Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I'm sorry. Didn't we not have more than the four, five that we selected? Didn't we have them in some order based on score?
Yeah.
So it seems that we would go with the next highest score.
If I could provide some clarification?
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
So since we went out with an RFI for a pilot program, it was a non-competitive process. So there wasn't a ranking or scoring. We really just looked at which vendors best fit, what the commission was looking for from this pilot program. So there is no, like, solid list of a number six or a number seven. The ones that were initially recommended, the three were the ones that fit best with the things that we were looking for and then the alternative two also fit well.
So there were no other companies that fit the criteria we established?
For various reasons. The five that were presented were the five that best fit what the commission was looking for.
So in our current recommendation from staff, are we separating out the fact that we wanted to include bicycles?
Micro mobility.
I'm trying to figure out what this motion is because one part of it has to do with the scooters.
Correct.
But the overall recommendation from staff had, was much broader.
Correct.
So, help me out.
That's my understanding as well. And Commissioner Matlow, I'm going to come to you in a second after the city manager, but my understanding is, is that the motion on the table that was seconded is that we are going to go back out for RFI for this last slot using the same parameters as the original RFI to identify a scooter company. But staff's recommendation is for micro-mobility, which expands a little bit to also include, you know, the bike share and everything. So let me come to the city manager and then come back to Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, actually, the availability of bikes and other micro-mobility was a question asked in the RFI process and those companies that had that availability were preferred. We always envisioned the expansion of the program beyond scooters if possible. And so the recommendation of 90 is to expand the scooter program. We believe the benefit could be that we bring other, this is an odd term for me, micro-mobility. It doesn't even make any sense practically. But nonetheless, it sounds good. So, but, but other forms of mobility in our community, not limited to e-scooters, and that's kind of the vision that we had all along and it did form the recommendation originally for the companies that participated.
Okay, Commissioner Matlow.
Yes, and I was correct in what the motion was and I don't mind modifying the motion to also include option one, to expand into the bike.
Excellent. I think we're all there. Diane, you, Commissioner?
I agree, I'll second that.
Excellent. Any further comment on that?
Just another question, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem.
How long would this RFI process take? I mean, because they're already coming in kind of behind eight ball.
Commissioner, let me ask for some help. My instinct is about 45 days, 60 days, somewhere in that range.
That cuts a lot into that extended six months.
I'm going to look at my experts and I don't know if it's possible 30 days, but I can't imagine it being less than that.
Yeah.
I'm going to go with 45 days. How about that?
There you go. And the reason, Mr. Mayor, that I recommended Blue Duck is because they're already into both. They do the bicycle and they do the e-scooter. So we, I mean, if we went with one of the firms that was already in the hopper, I mean, they are ready to hit the ground running, from what I understand, in both areas, bicycle and e-scooter.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
But they're not already in the hopper because there was no ranking done. So if they, if we chose five and they were number six, then that would be easy, but there was no ranking done. So anybody could be in the hopper and if a vendor, the vendor understands that they're coming in late in the game and there could be some proration of data for them so that we're comparing apples to apples when we provide their information, I think that any vendor would have the opportunity to make their case. And I don't know how long it took last time for the RFI.
Last time it took around 30 days, but it was a really expedited process. So I think 45 makes sense.
Okay, and you had to create something from scratch. Now we already got something, right?
We do, yes.
Okay, so 30 to 45 days and they could be in the game. So I'm even more confident that we need to go with the motion on the table.
Commissioner Bryant.
Call the question, please.
Well, I think we're there. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 13.05.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the potential sale of two downtown city-owned blocks. The properties primarily today are used for surface parking and operate to host food trucks on select days, one of the properties does. Recently, we have received numerous calls from parties interested in purchasing these parcels, which really triggered our look to see if it was an appropriate time based on market conditions to offer them for sale. If you desire to sell them, it would go through an RFP process and in that RFP process, you could contractually require certain uses, you know, influence the character of future development and protect key site features. I think that's an important point. We've got some aerial photos so we can orient ourselves to where the parcels are and Wayne will share a few more comments on this.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. Just to put the two properties in perspective from the site, if you look, it's just kind of catty-corner from the Civic Center. It's catty-corner from the State Capitol Complex and it's just two blocks away from City Hall. So it's really a part of our downtown core. If you look at the, well, first of all, let me just go back to just the last couple of months. I've been given some presentations on the downtown and what makes us successful downtown. One of the fundamental pieces that we need for our downtown is people. People in our downtown after the work hours between 8:00 and 5:00. You get people in our downtown from 5:00 o'clock to midnight or afterwards, then you have a real opportunity to create a very vibrant and an economic vibrant downtown. So what you see here is just a snapshot of some of those uses that are going to start creating that synergy for people in our downtown. So these are all the hotels. So they're going to be here after hours looking for things to do in our urban core. I'm going to go to the Arena District. So just right next door to the Civic Center, you see the site to the right-hand side. to the right-hand side. These are planned changes in the Arena District with FSU University. When you start creating this type of scale and massing of development, it's going to create synergy with our site. So we have an opportunity to kind of piggyback with what we're seeing in the development world. People get excited when they see this stuff happening. They want to build on that excitement that's already including, that's already going on in our downtown. Real quickly, as the manager pointed out, the site, you've got two parcels there. Predominantly, it's used for surface parking. We also have the sand volleyball court there, and we have the food truck circle on one of the sites. You look at the sites, one of them is 2.41 acres, the other is 2.68. Part of the process that we could go through, if we put out an RFP, a competitive process, we look at those things that are important. If maintaining public parking in this area is important to you all, we put that in the RFP. If keeping the assets to that site, we took a lot of effort when we completed Gaines Street to protect an oak tree along Gaines Street. Significant amount of effort was put in there. We don't want to lose that. There may be other trees, and I suspect there are some other trees on that site that are necessary to preserve and something that you would desire to. We include that in the RFP. At the end of the day, you can control everything that happens on these two blocks. The timing, the location, the intensity, all of those things. What we are proposing is that we put out RFPs for both these properties. We would expect maybe proposals on both. We've had some interest in both parcels, and then you may expect interest on only just one parcel. We would have an opportunity to look at what people envision on that site, the cost they're willing to pay for those things, and the amenities that we want to preserve and keep on those sites looking forward. At the end of the day, we'll have a committee that would review those proposals. We'd bring back our recommendations to you, and you would make that final decision on whether or not we sell those properties.
If I could add, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, you'd have no obligation to sell the property. So if the interest is not what excites us, we'd have no obligation to move forward. This would really be a test of the market to see if there was interest, and it would be something that you'd be interested in.
Mr. Treasurer Clerk, do we have anyone speaking on this item?
On item 13.05, we have Rebecca Kelly Manders. I believe that's the only speaker we have on this item.
Is Rebecca here? Oh, yeah, there's Rebecca. Hey, Rebecca. Thanks for staying with us.
Absolutely. I want to thank the commission for allowing me to speak today. My name is Rebecca Kelly Manders, 2402 Balsam Terrace, 32303. I stood before the commission in this chamber in 2012 and asked for the improvements to be made to the John's Lot. As you can see, the food truck court was built with minimal amenities and minimal costs to the city at the time. They placed a power pole for us and a few tables, and it is the responsibility of the food trucks to police the garbage, and we remind the city when it needs to be mowed and things like that. And we have done a lot to make it a usable space. It is the only place in the downtown corridor where multiple trucks can park at one time. And we have found in our business model that when multiple trucks park together, that we all do better. In the course of placing the food truck court here, the main day that gets utilized is Wednesdays. However, it is open for permit purchase, seven days a week during the normal city hours that the Parks and Recreation team, we can utilize it. It could be very cost prohibitive to do so, which is why the main day that is being used is Wednesdays at this time. We knew when the city granted us the use of this parcel that the sale would probably be inevitable, because progress happens. What we, the, I'm representing as the former president of the Food Truck Association with the current president and one of the founding members in the audience tonight. What we are asking is that if an RFP is put out and a sale is to move forward on this spot, that the commission work with these small business owners and the community to cite an equitable location to move the food truck court to another location in the downtown area where we can still service our customers, the state workers, the clientele that we have worked so hard over the past six years since the food truck court had its grand opening in March of 2013, to maintain and grow. I'd like to ask that the Downtown Improvement Association be involved in those talks. I'd like to ask that the commission be actively involved in those talks, and of course, that the Tallahassee Food Truck Association, which is a volunteer-run association of all members of food trucks in your community that feed you and your family and your friends, be a part of that conversation, and that we not get lost in the process of the sale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other speakers? Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
First of all, Rebecca, let me tell you how impressed I am with refire as a reentry program back into our society, and the amazing things that you're doing as an award-winning chef here in Tallahassee. Thank you. You do an amazing job. Let me start off the comment, and then we'll go down and say, I love the food trucks. I think they're funky. It's great. They do an awesome job. I think they provide a necessary fabric, especially to the downtown core. I had a very long conversation with Rebecca today on the phone as well. Let me tell you my thoughts. Number one, I am in favor of the agenda item recommendation tonight. When we first carved out the Chevron in the John's Block, everybody was under the assumption that this was not going to be a long-term situation, but in the meantime, that this was a good site. I do think that there is a higher and better use from a lane use perspective for permanent structures, in that it is prime for redevelopment. However, I 150% agree with Rebecca, that I think that we need to work together. We need dedicated downtown space specifically for food trucks in a permanent manner, but we also need the public infrastructure. Folks, we have no bathrooms downtown, public restrooms downtown, except for the public library or City Hall. And so, or if you're down at Cascade Park at the splash pad. So I think we have a really unique opportunity to put our heads together, come up with some really cool space dedicated to the food trucks, but also put in the public infrastructure necessary to support it as well. And Rebecca and I had a great conversation about this, and I'm committed to moving forward and doing that. You know my position in supporting the staff recommendation, but I think that we've got the opportunity to really knock it out of the park, and I'm looking forward to working with you on it. So that's my position. We'll open it up. Commissioner Matlow, then Commissioner Bryant?
Sure. I'm not ready to support this RFP tonight. I think it's just too big of a project, and it's happening a little too quickly. You know, this came up during our recess, and it, this really is five acres in the heart of our downtown. And when we bought Northwood Mall, we said if we owned the dirt, we could really control its destiny. And I'm 100% in favor of figuring out what we're going to do here and moving forward, getting ideas from people. But I know when we put out an RFP, we come back with a recommendation to sell it, and I don't think we've really kicked it out publicly enough. So it would be my desire that we set up sort of a master plan for the area. Invite the DIA, the DBA, the food truck associations, really get a community vision for what could be put on to this space, and invite Chamber of Commerce and the private sectors if people are interested, because there's possibilities for us all to work with it. But I think we need a lot more input before we come back with already trying to sell it. So I'll make a motion that we develop a master plan for the site moving forward.
For the site or for downtown Tallahassee? The process for downtown is in the works, not in a formal capacity, but is in the works. So tell me what you want.
For, to either include these two sites in the master plan, or let's just make it site specifically, how we want to develop these two lots.
Okay. There is a proper motion on the table. Was there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Moving on, Commissioner Williams-Cox, and then Commissioner, or who did I have next? I'm sorry. Apologize. Commissioner Williams-Cox, and then Commissioner Bryant?
Well, okay. I didn't second the motion, because I want to have an opportunity to talk about it, the possibility. One of the things that I've experienced here in Tallahassee is that we lose revenue because we do not have a convention center or a convention hotel, so people don't come to Tallahassee for large groups. And I have personally, along with many others, some in this room, we've had to take our conferences of 5,000-plus to another city. And when we take those folks to other cities, we're taking that money with us. You know, and I'm just really thinking that as we grow in Tallahassee, we need to think about how to bring more people to town, and how to house them, and how to have places where we can have conferences that will hold 5,000-plus. And I've shared that I'm working on something some years down the road, but I don't want to have to take our money to Tampa or to Atlanta. I want to bring it to Tallahassee. And so I'm looking at the potential downtown to have a convention center and a convention hotel where we can say, yeah, bring your masses, bring your whatevers. And we want to make that money right here in Tallahassee and not take it somewhere else. So I'm kind of thinking that if we, if we have someone who wants to purchase, and we can, I don't want to say control, but control what is built there, I think we need to pay attention to the hotels, like the drawing that Assistant Manager, City Manager Ted showed us. We got all these hotels around there, but we got the Civic Center right here. The Civic Center does not belong to us anymore. And God bless Donald L. Tucker, thoughts of his family and all in his passing. But it belongs to Florida State. We don't have a public convention center that belongs to Tallahassee. And so I'm thinking that this is a great opportunity to look at doing that. I love what the food trucks are doing, you know, but let's find a great place for the food trucks to survive, too. I think somewhere around Cascade Park is always great to have food trucks around Cascade Park. People can walk to the park and have lunch and have a great time. So that, perhaps that's something we can look at. But I think, I really think we need to look at building an economic engine downtown that will bring groups into town and bring their money with them.
Excellent. Commissioner Bryant?
Ditto. I don't want to belabor this point, but from an economic development vitality perspective, we need to definitely find ways to build a community. We have two plots of land. As a part of the process, even the RFP process, we should get input. And I don't think that it will be a process that excludes input from various groups. But I don't think we should belabor the process by going through that upfront and then getting into the RFP process. So I support this recommendation.
Well, when we get down to it, when you look at option number one, I mean, Commissioner Matlow, I hear you, and I don't think it addresses 100% of your concerns, but it does address the fact that during the RFP process, they have to include and defend basically what they want to propose to build there if we were to sell it to them. And let's face it, if we get to the end of an RFP process and we don't see anything that we like, or we think we can work with, we don't have to sell it as well. So I agree with you, Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Williams-Cox, and I do support staff recommendation. At this point, I still don't have a motion on the table.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Been properly moved for staff recommendation by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Williams-Cox, excuse me, Commissioner Williams-Cox. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Commissioner Matlow in dissent. Moving on to 13.06.
Thank you. This item requests your approval for a contract extension for the Premier One CAD and mobile support agreements for the computer aided dispatch software and hardware system. The current contract ends at the end of September 2019. It is a joint agreement servicing our 911 center between the city, county, and the sheriff's office. Leon County and the sheriff's office have acted on this, and they've expressed their approval. We will be the last step, and staff is recommending your approval as well. Tim Davis, our interim director of technology and innovation, is here if you have any questions.
Mr. Davis, stand by. We'll see. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Excellent. Open it up for commissioner comment or question? Been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Do we have any other business to come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
We are now at the time of the meeting for un-agenda business speakers from the public. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
We have three.
Excellent. Wonderful. And first of all, before we get into this, thank you for sticking around this late in the evening. We certainly do appreciate it. So let's go ahead and start with the public comment.
Okay. The first un-agenda speaker tonight is Michael Rosenthal. Each of your three speakers will be familiar faces, so they've participated throughout the evening.
Great. Mr. Rosenthal, thank you for sticking around till after 9:00. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, three minutes.
Hello. My name is Michael Rosenthal, 4045 Kilmaran Drive. Like you, I support more ethical government and more representative government. Concerning the Ethics Hotline, I really have this one question that I'm dying to know about one person in particular. Have they ever called the Ethics Hotline, or does this person call the FBI directly? And, you know, hearing about the number of ethics calls that the Ethics Office gets is only a couple of months, it reminds me of that old Maytag commercial with Jesse White playing the Maytag repairman and just sitting around all day waiting for a call to come in because their washing machines were so reliable. You have to be old to understand that one. Why not have the city lobbyists lobby the state to set up a permanent inspector general office to rid out corruption in local government? Wouldn't this be better for an outside agency to do? And these investigators would have a much greater expertise due to the number of cases handled, like going to a doctor who does many procedures. Dr. Jackson brought up an interesting idea of district voting versus at-large voting. I think people would feel much better represented with, by district commissioners. I think the large turnout at the last blueprint meeting shows that people don't feel they're being represented. I mean, that meeting went on to midnight, 1:00 AM, and they're pretty upset, like I was. So I had another alternative before, besides district voting. They have some commissioners that are at-large, but what about at random? I read an article many years ago that Amish and Hutterite were religious sects. They picked their leadership by lots. And they don't have to spend any money on campaigning, no oppo research, much healthier way to do things, I think. And maybe have a couple of, this form of selecting people is called sortition, S-O-R-T-I-T-O-N. And we use this in our country for jury selection. And so I hope that when you're coming up with a charter review, you might look into actually keeping a couple of seats for people in the community picked from a pool of people who just apply, and then the winners get picked by random.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. Mr. Clerk?
Erwin Jackson.
Dr. Jackson, thank you for sticking around. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Don't say you appreciate it yet now. Actually, I wasn't even going to speak now, but Curtis Richardson said some things that are just not, is not true. And I had to stand up and speak and then correct him. Twice tonight, and really over the last eight to 10 years, when I'm up here speaking about corruption, Curtis has been one of the main defenders of some of the biggest crooks in the city of Tallahassee.
Erwin, I wish you wouldn't say that, because it's not true.
This is my three minutes, Mr. Mayor. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, but please, Dr. Jackson, let's.
Well, now, here's what happened. He sits up here, and he wants to say we have one person who's a crook, Scott Maddox. Well, that's not correct. We do have, for the last several years, I've tried to explain to Curtis that we do have a cloud of corruption here. It's not one person. Scott Maddox is a criminal, okay? But he's not the only criminal. There will be other indictments. It's a system problem. It's not one person. And I think that's what we need to understand. When we came up with the Ethics Commission, the reason that came up was way before the Ethics Commission actually got started. It was four or five years before that, and it had to do with John Marks. Now, Curtis, you were asked about Scott, you know, Scott's the only crime here, corrupt person. That's not true. We had Alan Katz, who was taking money as a city commissioner when he was voting for the biomass plant. I took it the Ethics Commission, and that was proved. John Marks, he repeatedly defended, was getting paid $150,000 a year for a $32 million no-bid contract, and he was paid that for six years, $900,000. That was proven in an ethics complaint that I filed. So for you to sit there, you folks were here, and the past city manager was accepting money. All right, you wouldn't fire him, but at least when the ethics complaint came out, that I had to file. So then you subsequently would fire him or negotiate a leave and buy him off, or whatever you did. So there's lots of corruption here. Right now, the FBI has said years ago that this is the most corrupt city, a small, mid-sized city, and it has a reputation. It's the first time ever that three mayors, Marks, Maddox, and Gillum, are all under FBI investigation at the same time. So Ms. So, Ms. Richardson, don't tell the public that Scott Maddox is the only problem. Thank you very much.
Dr. Jackson, thank you. Our last speaker this evening, Mr. Clerk.
Last speaker is Peter Buttstein.
Mr. Buttstein, thank you so much for staying till the very end. We certainly do appreciate it. Your name and address, please, for the record.
Peter Buttstein, 1628 Woodgate Way on behalf of Common Cause. Mr. Mayor, I don't know where to begin here, but you say that you're confident that the commission will pass a fair and firm ethics ordinance, but respectfully, based on your line of questions and the issues you've raised, it just doesn't sound that way to me. I had prepared a preliminary response, but based on advice from friends who are far more circumspect than I, I want to sleep on my comments tonight so that I might speak now from my head and not from my heart. In three minutes, I can't possibly respond to all the issues that you've raised. If we are to have a meaningful input into your October workshop, I implore you to give us the time to respond to your questions and issues, many of which are simply not based on an accurate understanding of the way the Independent Ethics Board goes about its business. With that said, I would like to respond to comments from Commissioner Williams Cox and also Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Williams Cox, Leon County has taken a very different approach to ethics. It has already passed an ethics ordinance that is much, much stronger than Tallahassee's. And unlike the city's adversarial response to our efforts, the county has actually invited us, our coalition, to suggest improvements to its ethics ordinance. Those improvements will be considered at its October meeting, and our coalition has devoted its time to Tallahassee because it's Tallahassee, not Leon County, that's the problem. Mr. Richardson, the city's problem is not just one former commissioner. It's also a former city manager. It's also a second former commissioner. And I predict that the FBI investigations may lead to further embarrassments to our fair city. I should add that the charter amendment that we worked so hard to pass appears to be at risk by the kind of comments that were made tonight. And, you know, it's just, it's after years spent on this issue and all the people who have worked on it, it's going to be very sad if our city doesn't respond in a meaningful way. When we first proposed the charter amendment, the commissioners at the time all deplored our efforts. Their reaction was, "How dare you suggest that there's even a hint of corruption in Tallahassee?" And at the time, I've got to tell you, I confess, even I opined that perhaps we should be focusing our attention on South Florida. How times have changed. Mr. Mayor, I hope I have misinterpreted your line of questioning. I encourage you to meet with Mr. Herring and also with members of our coalition so that we might set the record straight. Thank you.
Peter, you know I consider you a good friend, and of course, let's get together for coffee next week.
Okay. Good.
And bring the coalition together. We'll spend a couple of hours on it.
Okay.
I would enjoy it. By the way, I'm also very proud to announce, remember, I was on the county commission and voted in favor and passed that county ordinance.
Absolutely.
The ethics ordinance, which put in very strong procedures at the county level, and I'm glad that you're working with them.
You said a high level. Let's continue it in the city.
Absolutely. And I do think I speak for everyone. We are committed to passing and strengthening a fair and firm process here in Tallahassee. Yeah, we'll get together, okay? Absolutely. Do we have anybody else from the general public that is here, is interested in speaking at the end of the meeting? If not, we're going to start with Commissioner Bryant and work our way down. Do you have anything to bring up or to mention?
No, sir. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Williams Cox.
I just want to say, because I see he's still here in the audience, I want to say congratulations to Caitlin R. Barber and his staff or his volunteers for producing two outstanding French Town risings over the past two weeks. And I met with FAMU President, Dr. Robinson, yesterday, and he told me that he was down there on Friday night, and things seem to be going well. We know we got some parking issues to tweak, but I think the spirit of the people have spoken that this is a great thing that's happening in Tallahassee, and I'm real proud to be a part of it.
Commissioner Matt Lo.
Yeah, I concur with that. I'd like to get an update on our in-kind expenditures towards French Town Rising, as well as we have a CRA meeting tomorrow, and I think we should take another look at addressing whether we should do a large event program in French Town. I know it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to discuss it and just want to give everyone a heads up.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we're ahead of you. Commissioner Matt Lo, I've talked with staff and they will be bringing a recommendation to us tomorrow for funding the French Town Rising going forward. I stick by my statement, Mr. Jackson, you all mentioned three to four people, three of which the Ethics Commission dealt with as it should have. The other was criminal and the criminal justice system is dealing with as it should have. I stand by my statement that this city, unless I'm proven otherwise, when November comes or whatever happens then, but I don't think any of us know that now, that this city is not a bastion of corruption. Now, Peter, I don't, I don't know, City Hall, Peter, I don't know where you get, or what that was based on, and educate me if it's based on indictments or arrests or, I mean, I don't know what that was based on, but I haven't heard it. And I don't know what it's based on. And so I just don't want us thinking that our city is just a bastion of corruption when all you all name now is four people that, and that's been in recent, pretty much recent history. I'm not defending anybody because I, like I said, I know how Curtis Richardson serves, and I serve because it's based on what's in my heart. I've never taken anything from anybody. I've never asked anybody for anything based on my service, but that's Curtis Richardson. I can't account for anybody else. I'm not defending anybody else, but I just don't see that in our city.
Dr. Jackson, we're going to wrap this up, and I encourage you two to get together and have a wonderful conversation. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, anything else?
That's it.
Great. I have two items I'd like to bring up for the commission and have your consideration to bring back at a future meeting. The noise ordinance in Tallahassee is something that, as I have learned, I'm sure you all have been getting the same complaints from one of the hotels here in Tallahassee about noise late at night. And what I've come to figure out is that there are different noise ordinances in place for different parts of town or lack thereof. I would simply ask staff to bring us back an agenda item to update us on the noise ordinance within the city limits. Is it one in the same citywide? Do we have districts? Do we have different standards for different places? Where are we? And any recommendations that you might have?
Mayor, we did not, I did not, again, I looked at Commissioner Bryant. I've not received anything. I think that people don't understand our government, how we govern here. You're the target. So they send it to the mayor. They don't realize that the mayor can't send it to us. And that when we come, when we come.
Counter blessings.
When we come here, we're equal voters. So, you know, I'm happy for you to have them, but if they want us to participate, we need to know too, and you can't tell us.
Yeah. Commissioner, hence the reason why I'm looking for buy-in, to get some type of an update from staff on how we handle noise ordinance in Tallahassee.
I'm glad you're the target, though.
Okay. I need somebody else to make a motion for me, if you don't mind? An update on the City of Tallahassee noise ordinance.
So moved.
Yeah, seconded. Properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Saying none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Here's another one. So in all the conversations regarding the food trucks today, there's something that, and I'm not familiar with this, but there's something that I learned that I find disturbing, and that is food trucks are the only industry in Tallahassee that we require to have a permit to operate each day at $32 a day. Now, the history of the permit is that it came out of special events, like the Springtime Tallahassee Parade. If you wanted to come and set up shop, you had to get a permit. If there's a concert at Cascade Park, you had to have a permit. But what we have is an industry, the only industry in Tallahassee. In fact, if you recall, many years ago, we got rid of the business license. So a restaurant does not have to get a City of Tallahassee business license. You have to have a state license. You've got to be registered with the Department of Health, right, Jeremy?
Right.
Right. But there's no city license. But we have a permanent daily fee of 32 or 32.50 a day. So if you're a food truck and you set up shop, even currently, right now, down at the food truck court, they have to pay 32.50 just to be there today. And tomorrow when they show up, they got to pay 32.50. And on Friday when they show up, 32.50. I think it's punitive. It's the only industry that has to pay a daily permit. And so I would like for us to address and have staff bring back an agenda item that completely restructures outside of special events. Now, parades, that's different, okay? Concerts, Cascades, that's different. But for normal day-to-day business, if they're on public land, I get it, we have to have something that can support the infrastructure because they're not paying property taxes. I just think $32 a day is much, and I'd like to have this conversation with you all and see where we can go from there.
Is it because they're on wheels? Because they can be in different places, you know?
They're mobile and they're on public land, like at the food court.
Okay.
Down, you know, what we talked about.
That 32.50 sounds very, sounds familiar because to rent space at rec centers and community centers, it's 32.50 an hour.
It's a special event. Correct.
So, okay, so they're one in the same. So special event is a, is a permit for a food truck, but 32.50 to rent per hour. But it's 32.50 per hour, not per day, per hour to rent at a facility.
Yeah. But I think it warrants a conversation. I think we send a strong message that we support the food truck industry. I love your restaurants too, but you know what I'm saying. We're sending a strong message that we support local businesses. And again, I think a $32.50 permit on a daily basis is repressive to the small business person. Commissioner Matt Lo.
I tend to agree. I would caution us, the pushback we're going to get is from restaurants, and if there's public property nearby and, you know, they're paying rent and they feel like somebody could set up across the street. But that being said, I do think $1,000 a month is in excess if you're trying to only park in public areas and you don't have private areas. So I would think we could explore different areas, yeah, different areas of town where we could allow them that won't compete directly, you know, across the street from a restaurant. Love to have that conversation and bring it back.
Okay. I'll give you a, for instance, the current food court that we have, right? The sand volleyball court, right? I don't think we should charge somebody $32.50 a day to set up in that sand volleyball court, all right? $1,000 a month. But you got to charge them something to help support that public infrastructure, right? The road that they use to pull in and out and all that kind of stuff. So you're absolutely correct. There's got to be a fee structure, maybe on an annual basis, that helps support public infrastructure where they park, but it's not $1,000. So that's all I'm looking for.
Mr. Mayor, I think what a part of that discussion then we would need to have is the fiscal impact.
Correct.
Of whatever it is we do.
Correct.
Because there might be positions supported by this or, so whatever we do, we include what the fiscal impact would be.
Absolutely. Are you clear?
Yes, sir.
On the intent?
Yes, sir. If you wouldn't mind, I just want to make sure I captured what Commissioner Matt Lo said, locations in relationship to other restaurants. Can you repeat that, sir? I'm making sure I've captured that.
If I were framing how we would do it, we would just pick specific city locations where you could set up that would have somewhat of a reduced fee or an annual fee that wouldn't directly, you know, compete, and that could be 5, 10, 20, I don't know. That would be up to staff to decide what location's made most sense.
I think it's a great, great suggestion. Absolutely. But anyway, let's get creative. Let's talk about this. Motion made by Commissioner Matt Lo, seconded by Commissioner, the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Anything else to come before the City Commission? We stand adjourned.
All right.